Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Public Budget, 2022 Budget Work Session to Order. Welcome. Tonight, we have with us Tom Perambo, the Director of the Department of Public Works, Larry West, the Business Administrator, we have Scott, Scott, how do you say your last name? I'm sorry. Petroface. Scott Petroface, who's the Fleet Services Supervisor at the DPW, and we have Paul Bechtel, who is working with McLean and Associates on behalf of the Park Study for the City of Scranton. So just to recap kind of where we are in the budget hearing process, we're doing something, as everyone who's been paying attention knows, a little bit differently this year. Tuesday, we met with the Mayor, Mr. West, Ms. Eileen Cipriani from the Office of Economic and Community Development, and Tom Olesky, who heads up the Licensing and Inspections Department. So we had a budget hearing on Tuesday, and we went a little bit deeper into the OECD Department and Licensing and Inspections. Tonight, we're going to talk specifically about the DPW budget and the Parks and Recreation budget. And it goes without saying, and everyone up here on council knows and in the public, that the DPW, I think, is obviously, besides the Police Department, probably the most visible department in the City of Scranton. Those trucks and those, the men and women of the DPW go up and down our streets every day of the week, probably seven days out of the week. So it's very important. The DPW has a relatively large budget, and we'll go through that tonight. And I thank you all for being here and your willingness to come before council and the public and talk about the budget and answer questions about the budget. So I'll first turn it to Director Perambo if he wants to say a few opening words.
Thank you to City Council at large. Absolutely appreciate-
Tom, I'm sorry. Can you just pull that closer so the public has a-
Sure. Absolutely appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and talk about some of the positive initiatives that we have implemented into the department since I've been the director and since we have a pretty decent sized, like right now, a talented management team. So we appreciate the opportunity to be able to express some of the challenges that we've been working through and why the budget items are the way they are, and to, you know, explain a little bit on some of the more positive things that we were able to achieve over the last year. I think it's important for the public and for council to hear that and to understand the rationale that is really behind this budget today. So I know Mr. West wants to have Paul from McLean Associates speak, so we can have him out earlier.
Sure. So Mr. Bechtel is here. We'll start with the Parks and Recreation Department, and then what I'd like to do is just go through each depart- or yeah, each bureau within the DPW. So we'll go after Parks and Recreation, we'll go through DPW Administration, Engineering, Highways, Refuse, Garages, and then we'll be finishing at the end if we could speak about the, I think there's probably questions about the Rubicon legislation that deals with the DPW. So Larry and Paul, I'll turn it over to you. We'll talk about the Parks and Recreation.
So if I can, real quick, just acknowledge Mr. Bechtel coming here today, tonight. Brooke Newhart, the Director for Parks, obviously she's out, she's on leave. So I asked Paul to come in, just to kind of give us a background. I know you, I know council has not seen the full plan yet, but I think Mr. Bechtel could kind of talk about some of the things that would be in our budget for Parks and Recreation in terms of some of the investment based off of the planning and some of the research they've done. So I appreciate Paul coming here tonight. So Paul, just turn it over to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Last time we gave the presentation to the Mayor a couple of weeks ago, it was like an hour and a half. So I'm going to synthesize it really down to try to go 15 minutes here, just to give you an idea of the scope and the breadth of this park study. It's been about a year we were working on it, starting last November, and it all focused on this flow chart that we have. The first of, we actually have a five-year contract with the city that we responded to an RFQ for. The first step was an assessment, a recreation needs assessment and comprehensive plan, looking at all 31 of the city parks. That included several, several things, including going out to every park during multiple seasons to look at the issues that they may have had or what condition they were in. Something we looked at specifically in every park that was very important was initially park safety and ADA accessibility. Those are the two things that could get the city in trouble liability-wise if there is a known issue that isn't addressed. So we looked at each park with a primary goal of what is the required annual maintenance at each of the park facilities? What are the short-term improvements that need to happen at each of the facilities? And we ranked them, you'll see when you get the overall report, but we have every park listed with short-term improvements and needs. And we broke it down into several categories that we identified, from high critical to high, medium, or low priorities. And we identified those high critical ones that need to be done within the next calendar year to make sure everything's in compliance. Then we worked on another component, that's long-term planning, where we took every park, we produced a conceptual plan of what we think the park can look like in the next, you know, five, 10, 15 years for each of the facilities. And we have a corresponding spreadsheet that talks about what those costs are. And this is important as you go forward with the city and trying to get each of the parks up to the realized potential, working with the Grant Department and working with the city, having this information in hand can allow the city to easily apply for grant funding. And although we were only in Phase One, Phase Two is more toward the implementation of looking for grant money and trying to do implementation of projects. We already started with the city last March and April. We've probably put in already seven grants through the city, some of which were funded, like the recent pump track that was put in at Connell Park. And other ones we're looking to hear back from, grants were put in for Connell, Weston Field, and some Weston Park, Oakmont, and Robinson as well. So another component of this was public input. And we did a survey. We did it both paper copy as well as a program called Survey Legend, where we put it out through social media. And we, we were shocked. We got over 850 responses to that survey, which was great, which represented over 1,430 people within the city that responded to us. Some of the key components of that survey, we had an overwhelming percentage of participants believe that property values are higher near well-maintained parks, 92% of those respondents. 75% of respondents believe the city parks are good to well-maintained. The main complaints were trash, illegal dumping, followed by broken play equipment, and vandalism. We did have a lot of specific park comments, and most of them were related to places like Naug Park, Oakmont Robinson, and places where the communities are really active and know that they, they need some improvements at their facilities. About 55% of respondents said they do need to leave Scranton to meet their recreational needs. Some of those reasons were the facilities were not either found in Scranton, or they were better maintained parks in other locations. But I thought the, the survey, hopefully everyone had a chance to see it come through, but it was really well received, and we were happy with the responses. We also did a couple of public meetings at Oakmont and Robinson, and the Mayor had some of her people out and staff to do several neighborhood work sessions as well. Let's see. So one thing I wanted to mention that we were looking at the study is, is looking at national averages to try to figure out how Scranton fits in with what's going on in other places in the country, especially similar-sized locations. So one of the items, this was through the National Park and Rec Association, they had a really good database, as well as another one we looked at was the Trust for Public Lands. Now, the Trust for Public Lands identified that Scranton is, is above the average in a lot of locations, specifically with the ability of residents to walk, within a 10-minute walk to a park. Over 76% of the residents within the City of Scranton have that opportunity to get to a park. And it had no implication based on demographics, race, ethnicity. Every, every group represented had a similar ability to walk to a park, which is, which is very good. It's not that high in a lot of other locations. For populations with 50,000 to 99,000 people, where Scranton falls into, the typical, they call it full-time equivalent staff, is on average around 40, with a low end of 26, full-time equivalent staff. So in that situation, I think Scranton is pretty low as far as the amount of staffing that is available to manage park space. That was something that we identified. I'll say it, though, it's, it's hard sometimes to decipher DPW from Parks and Recreation, their staff and the people that work there, because there is overlap. So I couldn't get a real calculation on what the true FTE number was for Scranton right now without the, the data. And Tom, I mentioned that there's some DPW works in the parks, the park works for DPW, so it was, it was hard as a consultant to try to identify those pieces. On average, communities have one park for every 2,266 residents. Scranton is right at that average, and if we account for other city property that's not officially considered a park, like LHVA, the Natural Play Area, or some parts of the Heritage Trail, or Little League Fields, Scranton is above average as far as the amount of parks you have for residents. And similar held true with the amount of total parklands for, for city residents. Last couple of things related to national standards. Nationally, most communities in this range have 22, 21 playgrounds. Scranton has 17. However, if we include playgrounds that are on other fields that aren't considered part of the park system, like Little League Fields, Scranton would be at that average. Basketball courts, nine to eight. Tennis courts nationally is 13, Scranton has three, which is low. I know one thing that came out of the study was potential for like pickleball or some other sports that aren't present here currently. Youth soccer was relatively adequate, multi-use fields as well. Dog park, one of the interesting things that came out of this study, as well as the survey, is the, the large need for a skate park in the city, which is a big investment. You're averaging probably $450,000 to put a new skate park in, but there are a lot of grants that can happen for that, along those lines. And the other one, the big component was Little League, youth, youth baseball and softball, average across the country 16. And if we look in Scranton, we have over 33 fields. So that's something to think about. Are all those fields necessary? Is that a way that the city can turn them into another type of recreational facility? Do some of them want to be sold to make money, to get them on the tax rolls? I don't know, but that's something to look at. It seems like there might be an overabundance of Little League field, especially with the decline in, in population with people playing Little League. Okay. Let's see. So I'm going to look a little bit on our, some of the shortcomings we saw within, within the park system. I think there, there is overall, there's kind of an inability to stick with an annual maintenance plan. In fact, when we were looking and asking the Parks Director, there wasn't even really a spreadsheet that we had to say this is the tasks that are, that we do all on a weekly basis. But as part of this project and working with Tom and, and the city, we did start putting together an annual maintenance task and schedule, along with some probable costs. They go from stormwater to weeding to snow removal, playground inspections, trash, and lawn care. By far, lawn care is the biggest expense for the city. So there are some options later on in some of these larger parks if we can put some more land into conservation. It doesn't have to be mowed as much. So there are some options to try to lessen some of those annual maintenance costs. But this is the first step, I think, that we could start working on a spreadsheet every year, and the Director can work on that, so we can get more realistic numbers on what some of the annual cost may be. Because right now, just on my, some of my assumptions as we were going through here, for instance, I tried to identify how many hours it would take for a crew, either of two or three-person crew, to come out here and do some of the work, based on its 500 bucks an hour, $300 an hour, when you account for wage rates and the travel time and the equipment. When we started adding everything up, an annual maintenance budget, we were coming in around 1.2 to 1.3 million dollars for maintenance, annual maintenance for all the city parks. And again, there's some wiggle room in here based on getting more concrete data as we move forward, but it's a starting point. And that is actually on, online with, I did the survey and, or did this budget and looked at other comparable communities. And in that range of around 1.2 million dollars fits in with the types of parks that the city has. Okay. Other shortcomings, we noticed there was really a lack of long-term planning. So the park staff, they, they don't have long-term goals to work for, and I think that could lead to complacency when, when you're not, you're not doing things that you see for the betterment, long-term benefit of the residents that they're, they're serving with their, their job. There's a lack of staffing continuity, specifically, I think, at the management and director levels. It seems like with changing administrations, you often have changing people that are in charge of Parks and Rec. And it's a tough thing when you have changing at the top and to get that camaraderie of the, the culture, I guess, of self-responsibility can be tough if you have so much change and turnover. Also, we noticed that some of the park employees are not assigned specific park facilities. Going forward, we think it's important that the Parks and Rec have their, their crews that, that work together all the time, and they can be in charge of specific parks. Not that you're trying to point blame if a park looks bad or it needs maintenance, but it allows for, just, I think it's, it's easier to identify where the shortcomings are with, within the system. Also, I think that the staff in general, just dealing with them for the splash pad, there's a lot of competent and well-trained people that work at Parks and Rec. I just think the city probably needs to offer them more training. One issue that we noticed is the, the inability to, for instance, at Dorothy Street Park, pruning trees properly. The trees, the trees there were improperly pruned. I think just a couple of classes that are offered through Penn State Extension, an arborist program, could get the DPW or the Parks and Rec staff up to date with some of the newer, newer trainings out there. And I think it's important to have staff to meet their potential if you, you have to allow them to be, get trained. And overall, I think there's somewhat of a lack of overall park programming that's organized and run through the city. There's a lot of people that use city parks. There's so many 5K runs, there, there's a lot of community events. But I think there needs to be better control that they run through Parks and Rec, so, so you know who's using the facilities at what time for liability, as well as when, when facilities are finished after an event, if there's issues, you can go back to those, those individuals. Okay. So other recommendations. So it was interesting that, now the city listed, and what we were charged with looking at was 31 parks within the city. Now, of those 31 parks, I had it here, I think only around 17 of them were actually, let's see, 20 of those 31 parks provided active recreational facilities. Active means things like courts or trails, or certain trails, athletic, like playgrounds would be active use. The 11 other ones were open space and passive. So of those 31 parks, things like Sunset Island or Woodlawn, the Lookout, those are all considered Scranton parks. However, I think moving forward, the city needs to realize there are the umbrella, they cover a lot more than just those 31 parks. And they should, like, why is Central City Little League considered a park, but no, what's the Harmon Field or some of the other, Sloan, were not actually on the list as considered a park, but they're on property that's owned by the city, so in a sense, they all need to be managed as if they are Scranton parks. And that's the other component, is the leases, which I think the legal department right now is doing a good job trying to get a handle on old leases that have been maybe outdated as far as youth programming. But I think annually, there should be a meeting of all the heads of these Little League Fields or youth soccer, youth football. They should be here every January to say, this is, this is what we're going to do again. We are going to sign the agreement that we are in charge of maintaining the field and not the City of Scranton, because you can attest, if one of those Little Leagues falls, or falters, if they don't have enough kids to play in a certain year, they don't come out there and maintain the fields, and then it looks bad on the city. But the city is in a tough spot where they own the property, but they think through a lease they may have had that's outdated, that they didn't have the responsibility. Perfect example is Cloverfield, where I think West Scranton maintains the field, but you guys only maintain the upper section. Okay. We did identify in a couple other ways, there's, like Jackson Street, and also Powderly Park. There's a few other parks, we wondered what is the, the value for the residents, and should they have money spent to renovate them, or should they potentially be, be sold as a way to bring money and revenue in to the city as well. So again, additional staffing and training, I think, is, is important. Not just throwing more money at a park or just adding staff to add staff, but having it with maybe a supervisor, somebody who is able to speak on behalf of the parks. I know you have the directors there kind of doing more with the programming, but I think there needs to be some more interaction with DPW, with a supervisor saying, these are the main issues in the park. And unfortunately, I think when the city's in a crunch, or if they don't have enough staffing on a given day, people from the, the parks get left behind to do garbage or other things that are, are very important in the city. But I think a supervisor might be able to help with the organization of making sure things that are needed in the parks get done, are actually completed at, at an appropriate time. Let's see. We also thought about, maybe the city can think about contracting out specialized work. I'm, I'm not sure how that, that works with, with union contracts, but certain components, if, if there's not adequate training, like winterizing the pools or the new splash pad. If there's a specialized company, like a pool company that can do that work, I think it might make sense for the city to consider that. Then the liability is on that company doing the, the, the winterizing of the property, so if a pipe or something breaks because it wasn't done properly, that doesn't fall back on the city. I talked with the City of Harrisburg on some other similar topics. We're working with them on the sixth, their sixth park now. They started contracting out things like mulch, the safety surfacing. Safety surfacing is important in your, your parks, but you don't realize how much effort it takes to make sure you have the adequate surface down every year. So Harrisburg would tell me they would end up buying in bulk these big piles of the safety surface, and they would sit there for a year and a half, because their DPW and their Parks and Rec weren't, didn't have the time commitment to do it. But if you hire maybe a landscape company to go and do that, you know as a city it's completed, and it might end up be cheaper, cheaper in the long run. So that's another recommendation to consider. Public safety and park safety is important. By getting cameras installed, I think, is, is good at all the parks, as well as like Wi-Fi would be important. Really trying to work with the skate park, skate park community to get another event space like that would be important. All right. That's, that's, I think that's good. I'm probably already over my time. But there was a lot, lot crammed into this study. There's a lot of, I think, some, there's recommendations in the plan. There are options. I just, just talking to people within the city, the parks are near and dear to a lot of people. They, they're, from nostalgic reasons to just everyday use. They're, they're very valuable to the wellness of the, the city. I know council and the administration has been in, really trying to push health and wellness within the city. A lot of things we're, we're trying to focus on within these new locations and plans and is the wellness loop trails, and just the amount of people that even used, like New Crowley Park with their wellness loop. During COVID, the, the use of parks has just skyrocketed. And it's important that the investments the city makes are continually going in the right spots within the park system. And I, that's one thing I did gloss over, but where do you go? Where do you inject the money, I guess, moving forward? We looked at some of those things that specifically need improvements now that, like safety hazards, but also I think focusing your money and efforts on your regional parks, which are Naug Park, Weston Field, and even the, the ability right now to convert Connell Park into a real regional asset is, is important. But focusing, instead of putting a little money in all the parks, I think taking your dollars and focusing to make sure you have some really good facilities is important. And then we also identified, and we tried to phase the parks in, in a way that we have them listed, which one should be the higher priority. Because I know the administration early on wanted us to almost rank 1 through 31, and that just wouldn't work for this assessment because the parks were so different. Because we did organize the parks into mini parks, open space, community, neighborhood, and regional parks. But we do have a ranking system in here that is phased based on community need. For instance, like McLean Park right now would be out of a 1 to 10, it's probably going to be down at a 1 or 2, because, not because it's, we're forgetting about McLean Park, just because improvements have already been made. It doesn't have as much of a need as like an Oakmont or a Robinson. And so that's, that's in the report as well, trying to see how the money would, would be spent in the long-term goals. But I know your budget tonight is more on the short term, so we at least did take a crack at trying to put some annual maintenance numbers on the parks. So I'll, I'll leave it there right now, and I can answer any questions and stick around as long as, as you need me.
Councilman Donnie, who is the chairperson for the Department of Public Works, so I'll turn it over to him first if he has any questions.
So when, when could, and thank you for coming. I mean, everything you provided is fabulous, I think. But when could we expect the final Parks report?
The, the report right now is draft, and it's in the city's hands. So they're doing a, a final, I guess, the administration's doing a review of it right now, an edit, and then I'm sure there's a couple edits that we'll have to make on our side, and then it'll be fully, I guess, presented to council. And the goal is to, I, I think we talked about adding it onto the website. It's a large document, a couple hundred pages long, and, and every single park, we have information and some concepts. So we are looking to put it then on the public, on a website, so the public can review it. So I don't know if I answered your question, but hopefully, I don't know if by the end of the year or the beginning of next year, I would say, yes.
So end of year, or, you know, beginning of year?
Right.
In terms of, you did mention training, so is that something that we should probably add as a line item into this year's budget? I mean, I can't imagine it's a big number to start off with.
No, like an arborist course to go, Penn State Extension, I mean, you might be talking $100, you know, to send somebody, or 40 bucks, yes.
That's all I have for right now. I might have another one in a minute, though.
I have a few questions, so-
Can I just make, Tom, before you get the rest of the questions, I just want to make a couple of points that Paul made, I just want to elaborate a little bit on, just so- So council's aware too, and I, and I appreciate the, the presentation. It was really helpful.
Too, too broad, I don't want to make sure-
It's okay, because I think what it does, it articulates to the council the importance of, and I, and I know every councilman and woman here have at one point or another had commented about investing in our park system and a few others. So I, I know it's near and dear to their heart. So in relationship to some of the, some of the leases that our law department was working on, that was, when I first started here in June, that was one of the first meetings I attended here. And I know that Attorney LaFerty's been working to renew, or take a look at some of the leases with some of our, our parks and some of our associations out there. There have been questions about some of the parks, and their existence, and really what's really in use and what's not in use. So not only are we talking about, looking at making some investments of some of these parks, which we should be doing, but now we've also been asking the question, should we continue these lease arrangements? Do we find other lease uses for them, as we did for Robinson Park? Or do we actually go out and just sell the parks for a higher and better use? So that was one thing I did want, I want to counsel know that the administration has been taking that approach with them. Second thing that you had pointed out, and you had, you had mentioned, I wasn't quite sure what you said, but the administration did start last year with a, a special event application, which, you know, for a lot of, for a lot of, for a lot of special events that, and organizers, it's been a bit of a bone of contention. I have to tell Tom, I hear, I hear him yesing over here. The application really was a process by which we were identifying some of those things. Who's actually using the parks? Who's using our streets? Who's using DPW? Do we need fire police protection? So really what this was like kind of a catch-all, to make sure that questions were answered. Do you have liability insurance? Do we, is the, is the city indemnified? Should there be, you know, other things going on? So we have taken some steps in that space as well to address some of those concerns. I'm not sure it's all foolproof, but, but I know there's a, there's a process and an application that we're, that we've been working on. So we've been trying to address that, that concern. I did, I did, I did make note on the training piece, and it made a lot of sense. I never thought about them. I, I know there's a gentleman who worked for Scranton tomorrow, used to work for Penn State Extension. I, I should have come to me that they do have opportunities up there. We'll take a look at that, and we'll, we'll find some way to, to address it in, in the budget here. And then there was something else you mentioned about some of the parks that were not necessarily in use, or maybe we don't have a whole lot of use for them. I could tell you there were some questions about a couple of them, and there were some deed restrictions or some encumbrances on some of those parks, meaning that once they were, if they were family-owned parcels of land that had been deeded over to the city for the use of a park, we may be restricted in its use. In other words, we wouldn't be able to just sell it or turn it back over. We would have to either go back to an estate or, or to whoever, whoever had donated the land. So I'm not saying that, that, that's certainly on every one of them, because I'm, I'm sure it's not, but I do know there are some examples where that does exist, as we were looking through the, the legal part of it. And the last thing I want to talk about is, is a skate park and the investments. We've talked about it on Tuesday. We've talked about the ARP money several times. Obviously, it's a good source of revenue for some of our park improvements, right? So we just need to be, we need to be mindful that although there, there may be a, a higher dollar amount set aside for repurposing or working with our parks, we, the ARP dollars are restricted to, to such distract information. So keep that, keeping that in mind, maybe working with the, with the, with the, with your surveys and the information you're providing here tonight, coupled with it making those investments with the, with the ARP dollars, there may be some places- with the ARP dollars, there may be some places where we can make some of those good investments that you're talking about, maybe upgrade some of those, some of those parks that meet those census tract numbers. So I just want to put those couple things out there as he was working through.
On that point, have we looked at, you know, just plots and different lots across the city that the city owns that may not necessarily be a park, but that might be of use as a park?
We started looking at that. Several, unfortunately, before Ozzy Quinn passed away, we were actually working with the Hill Neighborhood Association on a vacant lot study that was going to be kind of almost a template for the city and then that project never happened. We did look at some vacant lots and identified some areas that may make sense as a park. We, we did, in GIS, we took a radius, like a ten, walking distance of ten, ten mile or ten feet around each of our park areas, and there's only a couple void areas. There's one in lower south side and there's one in the hill section. Now Prescott has a park that's there now that fills some of that void, but yeah, there's potential that vacant lots can be used for park use, but we did not look at every one. We do suggest in this report that an independent vacant lot study should be done to see what the city owns and see what can be put back on the tax rolls or can be used for even something like green infrastructure. I failed to mention that, but you're talking about parks and trying to fund them in the future. We, before the Scranton Sewer Authority was sold, we worked on a plan, it was a green infrastructure plan in 2013 that identified a lot of opportunities to use almost Scranton Sewer Authority dollars that they were required to spend part of their long-term control plan. Then that never happened once American Water took over, but down in Harrisburg, Capital Region Water has invested maybe two or three million dollars in permeable paving for basketball courts in parks that we're working on down there. So I think that could be something in the future if, I'm not sure what the city's relationship is with American Water, but if they have any requirements for lessening stormwater impacts or the MS4 program in the city or CSOs that are regulated, that could be an opportunity to get some matching funds. So these parks, we look at are dual functions, right? They're for recreation, but they can also be for conservation, they can also be for handling your stormwater as well. So that's another component that we should be looking at.
So I'm glad you brought up the skate park piece. It wouldn't be something I don't think I would normally bring up, but is there any areas that you're thinking about putting a skate park at?
We have, yeah, we have three or four listed in the report right now. Couple of them are on city-owned parks or parcels already. Just by putting in the pump track up at Connell Park, we've had so many bikers and BMX saying, well, who's using this field up here? And we're like, well, it was the South Side Steelers, but now we're not sure if it's going to be renovated or, well, what, you know, why don't we put a skate park here? And so that was something that came up. We were actually thinking that one of the best locations for the skate park was down at Weston Field. Reason being, it's central in the city. And I talked to a couple of the skateboard community and they really liked the idea of Weston Field because it's also on a bus route and it's close to school and it's in a relatively flat area that most people can get to. Because we did say another option, even if it's a smaller version, like just a bowl up by Naug Park. Naug Park makes sense because it's already a regional destination, but that would hinge on how the pool complex is developed. I know there's some talk about innovative type ADA accessible inclusive playground up there as well. So how you fit a skate park in Naug can definitely work, there's room up there, but we were looking primarily at Weston Field. And one of our, I guess, a lofty idea for Weston Field was, again, trying to get that merger on the consistency between DPW and Parks and Rec. We were actually proposing that the maintenance facility, the Parks and Rec maintenance facility down at Weston Field be removed from Weston Field and joined with DPW's garage. So you'd still keep Parks and Rec down at Weston Field, but that structure, which we looked at, would actually be renovated into a pavilion as well as an indoor, an outdoor skate park. So that was one of our large ideas. Another location we thought would be great for a skate park, because it's along the Heritage Trail, would either be down on Naug Avenue, across from the Giant, next to where the Naug Avenue Play Area is, or underneath, I really liked underneath the bridge right next to Redners. There's a parking lot under Redners that nobody uses. It's already used informally by skaters and it could have direct access to that location. It's not owned by the city, so that would be some way, if we could buy that property or the city can get ownership of it, I think that would be another location. So to your point, yes, there are several locations we identified in the plan.
I bring this up because I did get a phone call a couple weeks back and it was from someone in the skate community and they were suggesting that the pool on Capous Avenue, they were saying it's a shame that that's going to be demoed because they could use the pool as part of the skate, a skate complex there.
We thought about that. One issue was it's very residential there and just the noise of the skating was something we thought it might have been a little bit too isolated. And talking to United Neighborhood Centers as part of the project, they envisioned that as a location, a really crucial piece of the Pine Brook renovations that they're looking to do. And to make it work, I was shocked, some of the stats, they were saying, I think 60% of the places in Pine Brook are rental properties and a lot of them don't have their own backyard. So they were envisioning that park as open space with the pavilion and we have some concepts in there that can obviously change. It could, you're right, it could be converted into a skate park. We just thought, logistically, a couple other places made more sense. And just the programming of Capous, it seemed like open space pavilion made sense more for that neighborhood. But no, that is a viable location. It already has a pool that, the excavation is a big cost savings to create that into a concrete skate park.
The other thing, you brought up some of the baseball fields and I know you've been getting the leases together for some of the fields. Do we know what is happening with the field when we're talking about selling some of these fields as maybe part of your recommendation in the study? The Central Scranton baseball field at the top of, I'd say, probably Wood Street in North Scranton, is that a field that you're starting some talks with some groups to possibly sell or?
Yes, so that, I believe, and someone here may know better, but I believe Greenridge Little League and Central Little League are combined at some point. Those teams are using mostly Greenridge Little League, Little League fields for their playing. There was some, there was some discussion, not only for Greenridge Little League, but for a third party to do some leasing, rental, training, clubs, whatever, club, club baseball at Central Little League. That field, the last I knew, and to be honest, I haven't asked in probably two months or even more since I've heard about it, they were checking on some of those encumbrances, whether or not you could allow for a private entity to actually lease that land off the city to use for financial gain. So that was, we were looking at that, yeah. So the Central Little League was one of the fields that, that's part of this discussion about leasing.
Got you, so yeah, it was a for-profit.
Yeah, so there was even a question whether or not that private entity could actually purchase the field. And again, that's a whole different thing. We're talking about private lands, public lands and putting it out, you just can't sell it to anyone individual and have to be put out for bid in public process. So there are, that Central Little League field, that complex is on, is somewhere in discussion within the administration. I just don't know exactly where it's at, but yes, it was talked about.
I have a question.
Brought up too about the public-private partnership, I think is really key, especially in some of these areas along the Lockwana River by Chickfeldman Field and some others. There's a lot of potential, I think, for the city to grow their park system, but also get private funding in here that could make your facilities better, but it also brings some revenue into the city. I think the leasing, you know, just what you're trying to do over at Connell with the building and things at Naug, but yeah, if there's facilities that can be rented or leased, just a way to bring revenue in is really forward-thinking. I think it's good that the city continues to do that. And also by having private interest in some of these park spaces, I think it just encourages more people to use the parks. And having more people use the parks, it shows, you have less vandalism, you have less problems with your parks going forward.
So let me just add a little bit more about the Chickfeldman Field and the redevelopment there. That's right there by Sweeney's Beach, which there is access along the river off Papa Street by DPW Headquarters. That field has a softball field on it, has a basketball court, has a small little playground. But the access to that field and that complex right now goes over an old railroad bridge, which is in need of repair. And that's a city, that's a city bridge. So I don't know, when we're talking about redevelopment, there was some private interest in that field as well. I could also tell you there was a local college that was interested in maybe utilizing that field for their women's softball team. So I think there are, to your point, I think there are other options out there for the city to work with the private sector to help us increase revenue to build out these parks, but also to maintain them, which is, which is key, right? So we build them out, we got to maintain them. But in the case of that particular park, and I do use it once in a while myself, I go there to play ball, but there may be another opportunity for us to get a different entrance way, maybe down along the Sweeney's Beach, help that project along a little more, make some investments in the entrance way. And this way, the city wouldn't be on the hook for the bridge repairs that goes over the railroad tracks. So again, that's another project I know that's lingering out there, but I just want, if I could, just wrap it up before someone, if anybody else has any more questions, but talking about some of the additions to some of these positions in the budget, as we ramp up services and we talk about making some of these investments. I know the city, the city has made, prior to my arrival here, made significant investment in November Brino Park. We're talking about making significant investment up at Naug. Some of the parks that, you know, over the years have had some improvements, McLean Park is an example. You know, you're right, I agree, you know, we always talk about the fire police and our DPW, which obviously they're the most visible, but our parks truly is a lifeblood to the city and the neighborhoods and the residents that are there. And I think that, you know, making these small investments for long-term gains, or do you want to talk about long-term investments for short-term gains, whichever you want, however you want to couch it, making those investments in our parks, but having the staff to monitor, maintain, I think is critically important. I know DPW does a great job, they do what they can, but just want to put a pitch out there for the additional positions in DPW. I'm sorry for, I'm sorry for Parks and Recreation.
I wonder if you're seeing the results from the study and really getting to dive into it and take a look. I don't believe that we've seen the surveys and the data that you'd spoken about previously, but I did have a question regarding the accessibility of our parks, because that's an issue that I've noticed with before. Even the park that's nearby my house, Naug Park, we're over on East Gibson Street, in order to get there, there's, you know, not great sidewalk accessibility and it's only a couple blocks away, so we end up driving, right? So I wonder in other neighborhoods, how that's, if that's occurring and kind of what you found in terms of the data or the survey about that.
As far as any, trying to give the ADA accessibility within the parks itself.
Yes.
Yeah, so we tried to look at within the short-term park improvement needs. That's where we identified if there's areas. So not every portion of every park has to be ADA accessible. You try as best you can to get that, but what DCNR and a lot of the funding agencies talk about is a, an accessible route. So you try to have an accessible route, ADA stall or parking from every lot that gets to you to as many facilities as you possibly can. So that, that's the goal. And your point about infrastructure is very important because infrastructure investment may not be the standard we're in looks at, you know, oh, a basketball court is what people like or a nice playground, but the infrastructure around it is very crucial. One thing we tried to do with a lot of our park designs is these loops or walkways around playgrounds. It provides you the accessibility, but it also gives you an edge where you know this is where your grass ends or your mulch ends. It allows you to maintain your property more sustainably. So yeah, that's important. Every park, we're trying to tell the city where they may be lacking on ADA accessibility. So it is a crucial thing we look at for everyone. And also, again, a lot of the funding may come from state organizations and they're going to require you to have accessible routes. So a place like Naug Park is, with the slopes and everything, it's going to be hard to get ADA everywhere. However, anytime we do new infrastructure moving forward, I think you try to get a slope that's less than 5%. You try to make sure you have your ramps properly done. That's, that's all we can look at. We can't look at everything that's in the past, that's maybe not been ADA accessible, but going forward, that is a goal.
Did you find that in comparison to other cities of our size and their parks that we were lagging behind in that area?
I don't think you're lagging, lagging behind. I said, the closest city we can discuss, I mean, we're on our, set our sixth park in Harrisburg right now too. And the parks that we've replaced with new facilities, they all had the same issues of, just older parks didn't follow the ADA guidelines as they were now. I mean, the ADA guidelines are, you know, from 20 years ago, but some of these parks might have been built 30, 40 years ago and so they weren't as strict. But I think you could be assured, any new construction going forward will meet any ADA guidelines. And that includes any indoor facilities, restroom facilities, all that would follow the ADA's current guidelines. So sorry, I don't have a stat to say Scranton is better or worse than others, but.
That's fine, I just wanted a general idea.
I see comparable issues and it mostly is with infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
I can just make one comment to the, you know, talking with the mayor, talking about revamping some of these neighborhood playgrounds. The discussion about ball-less playgrounds has come up as well. Again, another significant investment where we don't have those limitations, but we have to take a look to see where that makes the most sense. Obviously, to some of these playgrounds, may not make sense to make those investments, but there are others throughout the city that I think would make sense. So that's also on, in the mix in conversation.
Yes, and the mayor did have us reach out to manufacturers that we've dealt with before and we have a, almost a catalog of really interesting and newer models of accessible and more inclusive play items, whether they're freestanding ones that we could put into certain parks that may, like Billy Barrett Park or Dorothy Street Park, that the facilities are still in good shape, they don't need an overhaul, but if you can put in a new piece of play equipment that increases accessibility, that's something we're looking at. And we also were working on an overall inclusive playground design or option in the city where some, I think a grant was, was put in for, so we're.
And I have one more quick question. So do you anticipate, or was this something that was included that in the future, you know, through the website or open, the open gov format that we'll have now that we can include a better idea of what each park includes for our residents? So you include that, you know, this one's more accessible or this one has a playground so that people can then see where they'd like to go to and what park could suit their needs, was anything identified like that?
That's a really good idea. We did not specifically put that in the plan, but I think, I think Carl and others, I met, I can't remember her name offhand, she was on the call, but she was in charge of like the website and Amanda, okay. It seems like they have some good people in Houss right now that can do a lot with the internet and the websites. I think that's a really great idea. I know if you could scroll through on the Parks and Rec website and have a map or an interactive map that can show different parks and the components they have within it. I've met a lot of people that maybe have recently moved to the city and I was asking them different things, if I said, now's your opportunity, tell me what you want to see in the city and your parks. And a lot of them didn't even know that they had certain parks near where they live or where they could go find a basketball court or where they could find certain playgrounds. So no, that's, that's a good point. I'll make sure we add that into the.
Yeah, like a lot of people may not know that we have dog parks at Connell Park or I'm trying to think about, I don't know where our basketball courts are, I don't, I don't frequent them, but if I wanted to, how would I find that out?
Almost like a legend that describes the amenities of the park.
Exactly, yeah.
Great idea.
Okay, thank you.
It's even good for tourism too, because people that are in the area of being able to look at that. I know I look at websites like that when I go out in different places, so I think that's, that's important all around.
I have a few questions just on some of the line items. So within the Parks and Recreation budget, the other salaries at $215,000, you've spent $56,110 and you're keeping that constant in 2022. Can you just explain what that is, what's behind the other salary?
Yeah, so that, that was a listing of budget line item, I think that was put in last year, that added $50,000 for some, some of the summer, summer help or, I forget what you actually described it was last year. What was explained to me was they weren't quite sure going into the year that that actually existed in the budget for it. So I think that was an addition from council, part of it anyway, in part. But we did keep it steady in there for additional salaries. We're going to make an effort for next year to make that, make that a real opportunity where we could bring in six or eight summer help employees to utilize for what Paul, Mr. Bechtel had reached out, what he mentioned here regarding maintaining, cutting grass, trimming, doing just some of the, some of the maintenance stuff that would be for temporary or summer help. So we did, we did leave it at that level.
That's probably just, that's probably something we should probably start posting soon and send it out to the high schools and colleges maybe.
Yep.
Because that's great.
So to that point, when I did talk to Brooke Newhart, two things had come up that I suggested just this year. One was just what you had mentioned, reaching out to the high schools and whatnot. There are four age clubs and other clubs out there that may want to have someone that may want to, maybe the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or any of those social organizations that may want to look for, look for some summer work. But I also mentioned for our lifeguards, lifeguard training program. I did ask her, she did reach out to the Dummer YMCA. I know they have lifeguards on up there, they have a training program. How do we recruit additional staff in the? How do we recruit additional staff, uh, in that space? So we're looking for creative ways to be able to bring in some.
Well, I think that would be able to also go into a training line item, right?
Yep.
In terms of helping, but we would just have to have some sort of requirement for paying for that training, right? To retain them, so we don't pay for the, to train them and then they go work somewhere else.
It's funny, it's actually quite expensive to train for lifeguards.
I know it is, that, but I think that's.
Quite expensive for, yeah.
But I think that's the detriment of why we can't find lifeguards.
Yep, so.
I mean, speaking to the school district, it, you know, we have swimming classes over at the middle school and other things at the high school, you know. We could talk to the swim teachers over there to get some of those certifications with their classes.
Yeah, Brooke, uh, again, Ms. Newhart did make a connection to the school district as well, uh, looking for some, see if there's again, anyone looking for part-time work. We'll do it again next year.
So that $215,000 is dedicated solely for like summer help to, to cut the parks, weed whack, things like that?
No, I don't think it was just for that. I think there's additional other salaries miscellaneous for anything that may have come up in terms of extra help for events that had come in for the summer, winter, whichever it would be. Uh, she had budgeted, um, last year for, uh, additional, um, services, whether, whether you're paying stipends, part-time work, whatever, working down at Weston Field. She was looking for some additional, uh, revenues, I'm sorry, some additional, uh, dollars to pay for some of those, uh, part-time work.
Okay, um, overtime, you have, uh, overtime is up, uh, salary is up $5,000 and you've only spent $28,191.71 through September 30th.
Yep.
Uh, can you just talk about the overtime? You had, you had $40,000 budgeted, you only spent 28.
We, well, that was only until September 30th. Uh, we still have a full quarter to go, uh, so we, we do, we do believe that that number's going to go up a little bit more. Uh, we did pay some additional overtime for some of the events and things in the parks, uh, cleaning up, cutting, maintaining, so there was some additional costs associated with, uh, working in the parks. So, uh, we did, we did bump it up an extra $5,000. Uh, but again, we do expect that $28,000 number to, to encroach up, uh, um, past the $40,000 mark for the year. Do you want to add something on that?
Thank you, Larry. Uh, one of the things that I'd like city council to consider with the overtime, like Larry had mentioned, that's only up until September 31st. So the, you have another, you know, couple of months, you have another three months here where overtime is being, um, accumulated with the, with the park service staff. One of the things that's, you know, near and dear to everybody's heart is the light show, okay? We have been occurring overtime to get the light show ready for the parks, and you're not seeing that in here. Um, the last couple of weeks, we moved the showmobile. There's special events for the showmobile. That's in cooperation with DPW and the park service individuals. The park service individual staff, they open and close the showmobile. There's additional overtime on that. And when that has to happen on a holiday, it's double time. So these numbers do fluctuate, so we put an extra little bit of, you know, money in there, $5,000, because we do expect more events to happen in the city as the COVID restrictions are lifted and COVID, um, you know, it starts to subside a little bit. We've experienced some of that this year for the parade. Uh, we experienced it for, um, the, the half marathon. We've experienced it for the Veterans Day, um, celebration. So each, each, all of those days that, you know, we had to move the showmobile, and there's going to be more of that activity next year. And many times, it has to be done after hours, and sometimes it has to be done on a Sunday. So that incurs overtime. That's why there's a little extra in there. Plus, this year first, is really the first time that we've really been focusing on collection of, um, of solid waste, collection of garbage, trash in the parks on the weekends. So we want to continue to do that, it's been very successful. As there's events at Naog Park, there's a large population that comes to that event, whether it's a, um, a, a, a car show, um, or, you know, touch a truck event, okay? That garbage needs to be removed on a Saturday or Sunday, if there's more events on Sunday. So the department incurs additional overtime for that. We expect to see that type of an activity increase as the city becomes more proactive on providing those events in the city.
So with Mr. Gahan, with that being said, I do have the October report, and it has about $31,000 was spent, you have about $8,000 left in that account? Do you foresee that going over budget this year, or do you think you're going to be within budget?
Um, I don't see that, but we can always do a budget transfer.
Say that again.
I don't see that happening, but we could always do a budget transfer.
Okay.
The capital expenditures is confusing to me. Um, now, nothing was budgeted in 2021, and I know that the former business administrator said that that was due to COVID. Um, only $25,000 is budgeted in 2022. Yet we have the, the park study that's, that's on tap, and we know that there, you know, there's going to be an opportunity to invest, um, both from the perspective of grants and then, uh, from the city's perspective as well. So what is the $25,000 for and why not more? Since the capital expenditures in other departments are, uh, you know, there's, there's a lot.
So, so a quick answer on that is, you're right, last year they did, uh, the city, and again, it was part of my time being here, had a very austere budget last year. We did realign a lot of the capital expenditures, uh, because they did not, they did not know what the revenues were going to be this year. Uh, that being said, there is $25,000 put in for capital improvements this year. That was to take care of some of the minor things. Some of the, some of the buildings needed, uh, maybe some, some of the painting that was done, maybe some broken window replacements, things like that. The larger dollars that you're talking about, uh, two, two things from the ERPs, and that's, we're going to rely on them again, um, uh, because you can't use them to, uh, you can't use them to pay for salaries and you can't use to pay down debt. So, uh, we are looking to make those investments, significant investment in parks. Uh, again, we've talked about the Naog, uh, the Naog Park. I think that, as an example, that's, that's a large ticket expenditure.
Can you use ARP funds for Naog?
Uh, we don't believe we could use, uh, well, that's, that's a great question. So there's part of, the, the part of the restrictions for, um, ARP requires it in a census tract. Naog Park is not, uh, in a identified census tract. But there may be opportunities for using, if we were to, as an example, go ahead and do an assessment and mulch every single park in the city, take a portion, like a 50, as long as 51% of it, which it would, uh, meets that, uh, demographic, we can utilize some of those dollars and we could mulch the parks. So to answer your question, uh, you can't pay for it in full, obviously. That would have to be creative through other grants. Maybe there might, there may be opportunities from, from within existing dollars within the city. Uh, maybe long-term allocation of, of borrowed funds, something like that. But that's going to need a capital stack and a, and a real plan to build that out, uh, depending on what, uh, the administration and council decides to go with. Uh, there's a big variant, there's a big disparity between the smallest dollar amount to be invested versus the, you know, if we went with the entire package. So that's something that, that the city and the council needs to work out and determine how we move forward in, in funding that. It's, but, but going back to the capital expenditures and investment in the parks, you're right, uh, but there needs to be a, an analysis on how we could utilize and where those dollars can be, can be invested. Now, part of the ARP dollars is, is under lost revenue. Those dollars are unrestricted. So we do have a couple of years' worth of not unrestricted dollars that could be utilized in, in parks across the city. So that's something the administration and the department heads will walk, walk through and see where, where those dollars are best invested. But, uh, but that's why there's only $25,000 put in there. It is to just to do some of the, the smaller things, again, painting, fixing broken windows, door hinges, whatever locks. So that's what the capital expenditures are for.
So, so the lost revenue portion doesn't have the same restrictions?
I'm sorry?
The lost revenue portion of the ARP money doesn't have the same restrictions, or does?
No, it does not.
It doesn't?
It does not. There are some restrictions on it, but they're not the same as the regular ARP dollars.
Yeah, yeah. But they might be able to, say, for example, use it as a gra, grant match for a park that doesn't fall within a census, qualifying census tract. All right.
And can you provide us with the breakdown of, um, what, you know, we'll get to the other portions, other bureaus of the DPW, but in terms of capital expenditures, can you provide us with a breakdown of what, like you said, small ticket items, but $25,000 is a lot of money. Can you provide us with the breakdown of what you'd be spending that on?
Yeah, sure, I, I, sure, I mean, I, I just, I'll get it, I'll get you a list of some of the things that had been identified, but.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay. Um. One of the questions I have is on the, the Parks, uh, Operations Supervisor. So last year, the, the mayor had proposed, uh, adding a Parks Supervisor, and, uh, council had taken that out, uh, for several different reasons. And, um, it's in here again, uh, for $50,000. So the Parks and Recreation Director's salary is staying the same at $52,500. The Parks Operations Supervisor is a new position at, uh, $50,000, and you've added in, I think, three additional employees, um, in the, uh, three additional groundskeepers, uh, it looks like. So can you just explain, you know, when I look at this whole operation in, in the Parks and Recreation Department, last year I did not agree with the way that it was split out. So you took the supervisory ability away from the director and you gave it to the DPW. And we hear that the DPW is, um, overmatched in terms of, you know, they're asking for a highway supervisor and that. So you took that responsibility away from the Parks and Recreation Director, and I guess the director was in charge of programming and whatnot. Um, so now you're adding three employees in addition to what you have, and you're adding a supervisor for $50,000. So can you explain the rationale behind that?
Sure, and I'll give it my best crack, and then I'll, then I'll let Tom expand on it. Uh, no secret, I wasn't here last year when those decisions were made, so forgive me on that space. But talking about a position, I'll speak for this year moving forward. Uh, Mr. Bechtel just laid out a case for making those multiple million-dollar investments into our parks over the next several years. Um, the, the Parks Director currently, you know, it, and I know there's been some commentary thinking about what, what, what actually happens, transpires in that space, but as we just talked about here, multi-million dollar investment in these parks. Naog Park alone, we're looking at it at a six or eight million dollar investment, give or take, right? So, so one person managing, maintaining, applying for, more of him from an administrator role, the, the Parks supervision, again, as Mr. Bechtel pointed out, there's been, there's been lacking attention in, in the space. And it's not just from a year or two, this is a long-term thing. This is not something that just happened in the last two, three, four, five years. But really, if we're going to make those investments, we really ought to be thinking about maintaining those investments. I mentioned it in, in my opening remarks a couple of times this week when I met with the, met with the, um, editorial board, I, I, we, I did the Act 47 hearing. I talked about Scranton being a 21st century city and how we all aspire for it to be there. I think if we want it to be that, and we wanted, we wanted to be what we all think it can be and it should be, we need to start making some of those investments. Having the Park Supervisor maintaining day-to-day, making sure those grasses, make sure the grass is cut, working with those crews to make sure the trees are trimmed, making sure the rubbish and the trash is picked up, making sure that, you know, the, the broken gate hinges are, are maintained and fixed on a, on a timely basis, making sure that if we do eventually get, get our cameras up and, and the things that need to be maintained on a regular basis, you need supervision. Someone needs to be with those crews every single day in those parks, making, making those things happen. The DPW does a great job, uh, but they, they are limited as well. They're limited with, with, with manpower, they're, they're limited with the ability to supervise employees. Uh, so adding, adding a supervisor in the space of, in the space where, where, again, we're making significant investment, it, it makes sense, look, short-term and long-term.
But here's my concern, it's such a small crew. I mean, Paul just mentioned that you have 31 parks. I mean, if, uh, Naog Park alone, if you compare that to, um, a, any of the county parks, they have 10, 11, 12 employees in one park. So you have such a small crew. To me, it seems like I could understand a supervisor if your numbers were larger, but to hire someone for $50,000 and you're only adding three more employees, and I don't know if that one employee is a pool operator and a groundskeeper, how that works. But it, it seems like, you know, is that person going to be busy for, uh, five days out of the week for eight hours out of the day? I mean, you're telling them to go cut the grass and, and you're riding around checking on it, and then what does that person do? I mean, there's only so many employees. And at the end of the day, if you're talking about parks maintenance, a supervisor's not going to cut the grass, he's not going to prune the trees. I think you would need more employees, even what, uh, Mr. Bechtel said. If you look at other cities, they have 40, 50 employees. I know we can't afford that, but.
So we, we mentioned earlier, there, there are seven employees on the books. Six of them are currently, I think we have one that's on short-term leave or whatever. So if you add another three or four employees to the base, and again, we're building the bench here. We're not, this is not just saying, hey, we're going to do it this year, forget about it. You know, it's trying, it's trying to increase the capacity. So maintaining daily supervision, it's, and that's probably part of the issue, uh, councilman, is that it's not just going and cutting the grass. It's actually driving the truck, unloading the equipment, cutting the grass, cleaning it up, putting it back on. I mean, it, it's not like, it's not like I'm using my grass cutter in my yard. This is industrial equipment, it's not, I mean, this is something that, I mean, our, cutting your yard is one thing, cutting a, a baseball field, maintaining our parks is another. So going back to the training piece, it does take supervision, it takes time. And if we really, again, I go back to the 21st century city, if we want to be professional, if we want to be that 21st century city, we should start treating our employees and all of our departments that way. And we should provide them with, with proper supervision and training. So I'm just, I'm making the case, I think, I think it makes sense. Every single person, uh, on the dais here has made a comment to me about investing in our parks. All of you have, at some point. And I agree with you. I agree with, I agree with the assets we have, I agree with the parks. I, I, I'm thrilled that we have a, now we have a study that really talks about what those investments ought to be. I'm not saying we're, we're going to get them in the next year, two or five years, I don't know, it might be 10 years. Somebody else will be worried about that. But anyway, I, I'm just saying, if we, we have to start someplace. And for, I don't care if there's three employees, but if, to your point about having just a handful of employees, if there are already six in the parks, if we add three or four more, and if we do happen to get six or eight summer help employees, that's, that's a lot of work for someone for, for six months out of the year. Scheduling, maintaining, again, moving equipment, making sure it's fueled, making sure it's put away, it's accounted for, accountability, all the while directors doing long-term planning and investment for these larger parks. I'm sorry, I took up your space there, but.
Now, the director, uh, you have listed in the, the narrative that the director, uh, is tasked with, um, scheduling field and property use, providing recreational opportunities and programs for the city's youth and adult population. Can you talk about what recreational opportunities and programs, uh, that are new that we've seen in the last year?
Yep, so, so I could tell you, I mean, uh, and again, I, I'm only here half the year, so I'm going to go off some recollection, some of the notes that I have here. So some initiatives that were put into effect this past year was Art in the Park, the Electric City Aquarium Event, Princess in the Park, Fellas Park Summer Concerts, St. Joe's Go-Joe Event was held in one of our parks this year as one of the stops. And I worked with the Boy Scouts, uh, on a, on a bat box project in a small neighborhood library. Initial, or some initiatives planned for the following year, similar family planning events, Neighborhood Parks Ambassador Program, uh, more lifeguards to open up pools on a regular and steady basis for the summer, and follow suggestions, some of the park surveys, continued upgrade changes throughout the parks. So these are some of the things that the director has been working on, and there's four, five, or six different, uh, initiatives that, that were started last year in the parks. So, uh, and again, I, I wasn't here for half the year to know, but I do know when I did get here, there were a lot of things that had been happening, and I, and I've been to some of them actually, representing the mayor. So, um, and I mentioned to you, uh, some of you know, that I, I do utilize two of the parks. I use McLean and I use Chick Feldman Field personally. Um, I, I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to sit here and criticize, but I, I could tell you that there have been some, some evenings when I got there, I, I know there could have been a little bit more attention paid to them, but that is what it is. I know they're busy and, and it is what it is.
Well, because there's, I, I mean, I, and I don't think there's enough employees, obvi, honestly. There's just not enough to go around, that's why I was.
I, I don't disagree with you, and, but, but in the same token, I don't, I don't think we could add 30 staff to the budget this year. So, uh, this is incremental increases, I think it's, it's an ask, I think it's worthy of your consideration. And again, I don't mean to cut into your space here, but, uh, but I think it's, it's worthy of the consideration. We, we have to start somewhere with it. I understand that, I understand that council has reservations about some of them, I understand it, I do. I, I was actually a councilman in a small town, I get it. Um, but I think we, if we really want to get to the next level, we really have to be focused on it. We really should be finding, trying to find ways to make those investments in those personnel.
So just, just based on your explanation there, it seems to me like we need more of a programming and events director instead of a operations supervisor, and then having the director being able to look at those long-term goals, but then also marrying, you know, what a director does, marrying, you know, one part of it with then, uh, you know, the maintenance part of it, and make sure they're all on the same page. But that, that could be, you know, discussed further.
So if I could jump in on this, so, I mean, what I think Mr. Gahan's saying, I, I don't want to speak for him. He seems, I, I think he, he feels as I feel, there should be more feet on the ground doing the work. He seems, I think he feels as I feel, there should be more feet on the ground doing the work. To me, it seems that there's about 10 employees, so we're going to have two supervisors for 10 employees, I get that. What I see, when this position was presented to council last year, I think it was called Parks Manager, something like that, the job descriptions seem very similar to the mayor's Tourism Coordinator. And some of the things I've heard here with events in the parks, things like that, wouldn't that fall under that Tourism Coordinator? So to me, it seems like last year we got one position put in front of us. This year, we have two positions put in front of us that kind of are two separate things that aren't married together maybe into one position.
So again, I can't really speak real close to what was presented last year. I could tell you what the discussions were this year. I know that there's a, you mentioned about having a communications and tourism person. I don't think they're the same, to be honest.
What I'm saying is the job description, this job description here, which I didn't think it made sense last year, when I read, here's the Parks Director, the job description sounded like that Tourism Coordinator that we're getting this year. And to me, that did not make sense last year.
So again, let me step back and we could talk about the tourism thing when I come in for my budget presentation. But going back to the Parks piece, and I understand there may be some of the language where it's conflated and we're messing some of it up there, but I think in the end, trying to navigate this through, and I know there's some confusion, maybe some dissent about how we merged up some of the park staff with the DPW and not separated. I was not clear, and I'm not, still not sure I'm 100% clear, but my understanding is that the Parks and Recreation and the DPW has gone back and forth for several administrations. This is nothing new. Some administrations break it out and do Parks and Recreation, some administrations bring it back under DPW. Again, those decisions were made prior to my arriving in this space. All I could say to you is that as we move forward and we're making these investments, it's my intention from my perch now to make sure that those needs are met, that we're making those investments in the right space at the right time. So again, going back to your report about the description of the Parks Director, I know that that's not, the tourism piece is not necessarily what she does. There's a lot of phone calls, there's a lot of need, there's a lot of requests that come in for the use of the parks. I don't think it's a secret. I mean, I spent a couple of days, actually I was going to say a couple of days, I spend a day or so every other week with her, her being Brooke, the Parks Director. And literally while I'm there with her, the emails and the calls coming in, looking for requests for use of the park. Who do I contact? How do I reserve the park? And it's mainly in the summertime that I was with her, but really, it was a non-stop, it was a non-stop request. So again, I don't know if that's a process thing for the city in terms of how our community engages our park system. Maybe that's what it is. Maybe we need to have a clearinghouse where you're allowed to just clear out into one call so that the Parks Director isn't feeling all the calls.
What do you have, you have a project administrator in the Bureau of Parks and Recreation. What is that position responsible for?
Sorry?
You have a project administrator. Most of what you're saying sounds like project administration, to me.
I didn't hear what you said, I'm sorry.
I said, most of what you're saying sounds like project administration. You have a project administrator who is part of the Clerical Union, who is in the Parks and Recreation Department. So what is that position responsible for? Wouldn't, it seems like double duty, or double...
Well, again, again, we're just talking about tens of millions of dollars in projects here. Again, trying to build the bench out, trying to get people engaged in the process, trying to get employees in. We are so lax in so many things, just in maintenance alone. The project managers, again, managing, I really wish I could have the project managers here to talk about what they do. But the project management piece, we are a public entity, as you all know, using public taxpayer dollars subsidizing on most of our projects. We have city taxpayer dollars being utilized, most expensed in our parks and other projects. The transparency piece, accountability piece, is really, it should be the priority on every single thing we do. It takes time for those accountabilities. Scheduling, maintaining, records-keeping, all those things, just to get a project across the finish line. And I will tell you that, again, in my six months that I've been here, the fact that we have two or three project managers dotted throughout the city has been, in my estimation, a lifesaver. Because I'm not quite sure where we would be, whether it's in parks, if it's in BA, if it's in Open Gov, having those project managers really navigate day-to-day connections and being the liaisons. I don't know, I'm not sure how the city really progressed before without them. Because really, to maintain record-keeping and the liaison and the connecting is vital and is critical. So the project managers moving forward, again, working with the department head, as we lay out these projects and we identify where we're going to make those investments, in order to keep those gears greased, we really need to have the staff.
I understand, my last point on this, because I don't want to, I think we're, I understand where you're coming from. It just seems like when you're saying she gets calls and emails about using facilities, there's a project administrator. Seems like duties could be delegated in a more efficient way rather than maybe hiring another person for $50,000. But we'll continue to discuss that. Mr. Preamo, in terms of the way that the Parks and Recreation employees are used, how often would you say that those employees are pulled off of parks and onto a refuse truck or they have to do some duty in DPW? Because I mean, we've heard tonight that they're able to be mixed in together.
Right, so the union CBA, the way it's written, allows that activity to happen. Now, as all of you know, I started this position a year ago, June. Since that time, no park staff has been put over to do refuse or recycling, basically into that practice. Although it is allowed, it's permitted in the CBA, but because of the sensitivity and the goal, all right, to have our parks all look clean, green, and safe, okay? Since I came on as a director, I made a directive to the staff that we do not pull these people from the Parks Department. Now, that was even under the prior Parks Director and under the current Parks Director. So I can tell you, if I'm like almost a year and a half into this position, that hasn't happened. Councilman President Gahan.
Okay, thank you. And you're hiring a Parks and Recreation, two Parks and Recreation groundskeepers, and you're hiring one pool operator slash groundskeeper. What's the difference between the two? Can you have someone as a pool operator and a groundskeeper? How does that work?
So that's a very good question, thank you for asking that. It really requires some clarity because the pool operator requires special certified certification from the Department of Health, all right, in order to operate, maintain the chemical levels in the pools, including Novembrino. So that is a classification that requires certain certifications by the state. A groundskeeper is basically a handyman that would help cut grass, trim the trees, get the proper training that Paul is talking about, beat a muscle really behind keeping the parks clean, green, and safe. The technical aspect of the pool operator is to make sure that the pools are compliant with state health codes. So there's a difference, right? We can't have a facility maintenance personnel, facility maintenance groundskeeper, go out and monitor and measure and add chemicals to the pool. That would be a violation of state standards.
So are we hiring another pool operator and looking for someone with that certification?
Well, we're hoping to hire if council passes the inclusion. So yes, we're looking to have three pool operators, okay? And then additional two groundskeepers.
Okay, and that person that's a pool operator can also be a groundskeeper or just...
Correct, so it doesn't really, you don't need to monitor the pool every single day. Or you do have to, I'm sorry, I misspoke. You do have to monitor the pool every single day, you have to keep records of it. You have to take the chemical testings, the water testings, all right? But it's not an eight-hour task. But if we're looking to build more capacity in the park system, adding more pools, doing something at Naug Park, whatever it may be, another splash pad or another park, we need to have that technical experience there. So this is an investment in that human capital that the mayor talked about on Tuesday. If you want to have a dynamic park system that's compliant with all state standards and you know where we want to go, we know we want to do something with Naug Park, it's my recommendation, the administration's recommendation, that we start building that capacity with manpower, that human capital. So that's what is there. You have to have, you have to bring the individual in, you have to provide the training. That training doesn't happen overnight. In the meantime, when they're not taking care of the pools, they're also available to do groundskeeping. So that's what they do. We have the pools open for three months out of the year, the rest of the year, they do groundskeeping. They do the weed whacking, they do the grass cutting. In the wintertime, they also help us keep the snow off the sidewalks over the bridges. We have equipment to do that, we have snow plowing equipment in the Parks Department. Parks Department staff in the wintertime is a huge, huge benefit to the department for city maintenance.
And right now, do you have two people that are certified for the pools, you said, correct?
To be honest with you, I have one, because one recently transferred to be a refuse collector.
Okay.
So actually I have one.
Okay, but you're looking to hire then two more?
Correct, right, well, we will be hiring two more if this ask is approved, correct.
Does this individual, although doing the chemicals, things like that, are they also maintaining the pool equipment? The pumps, the filters, the pipes, everything?
Yes.
That is associated with the pool?
They basically are, they're the pool operator, yes.
In the budget, and this is probably a mistake, it says NU, non-union, next to several of these positions, but I believe they're part of the DPW Union, correct?
I'm sorry, what are you talking about?
In the budget, in the, where it lists the employees, next to pool operator, Parks and Rec groundskeeper, facility maintenance, and then cleaning, I guess cleaning would be non-union, but you have for the three, they're non-union, but they are Union, correct, DPW?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a clerical, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, I think they just carried it all the way down because obviously the Parks Director and a supervisor would be non-Union. That's a clerical, that's a clerical, that's a clerical.
Okay, you're hiring a cleaning, part-time cleaning person or company, Weston, Novembrino? Excuse me.
So again, the, looking for someone just to do some maintenance cleanup after, so we, as Mr. Preamo pointed out, there have been so many events, things going on in these parks. I had driven, after Novembrino had opened, I personally had never been to a splash pad park before Novembrino opened. The week following that opening, I had driven by there several days into the evening and I could not believe the amount of people that were actually utilizing the park. So maintaining, cleaning, a lot of it stems from the COVID, wiping down, making sure the bathrooms are clean when those folks are there, looking for some, again, some additional assistance, not even sure we could fill the post, looking for some additional assistance to help maintain just the cleanliness of the parks, taking trash out during the day, on the weekends, when there are birthday parties or things going on. That, again, unbeknownst to me, I never really thought that the parks were utilized to the level that they are. But my short stint here has certainly opened my eyes to the use there.
And who does that now at Weston Field? Who cleans now and maintains the building?
So that is currently the park maintenance staff.
Okay, and so they can't continue to do that, we have to hire an additional person?
Well, what it is, it's seasonal, Councilman Gahan. It's seasonal investment to have someone part-time, basically cleaning the bathrooms. It's not cleaning the entire facility, it's cleaning the restroom facilities.
Taking the trash out, cleaning up after birthdays, all these things like that.
Can we use the, I know, I saw that within City Hall, you're hiring another person to clean as well. We can't include that, because it would seem to me that if you're just cleaning the bathrooms at Weston Field and Novembrino, that building seems very small to me.
Well, again, it's not just, don't forget, again, we're still in COVID, wiping down doors, making sure the inseptics on the doors, making sure that, you know, things are touched, there's kids everywhere, young adults, whatever. Just trying to maintain, keep it up close. The position here at City Hall, that's a small, that's a part-time maintenance person. That's not the same thing, it's not janitorial per se, although they could be. But this is, you know, the fourth floor has tiles, the bathroom tile on the wall is still stacked up on the sink from where it fell off the wall. Again, I've been here six months, I know Mr. O'Hara does a great job. Just looking for some additional capacity, a couple hours a week to help with these small projects here in City Hall and other buildings and other assets the city owns.
Okay.
Okay? And that position, the maintenance position is not necessarily janitorial, it's low maintenance. Again, fixing some of the things that are broken.
And I'm sorry, this is a person that you're hiring part-time or a company to come in and do it?
Well, again, looking for someone part-time to do that work. If we could get a part-time person, we listed it as a job, we listed it as a part-time job.
Okay, okay. All right, I don't have any more questions.
I have questions.
Councilman McAndrew, go ahead.
Yes, so is it Mr. Beckler or Beckel? Beckel, Beckler, I don't, all right, thank you, Mr. Beckel. So you said during your assessment, the challenges you had was with the overlapping of employees between DPW and parks. You said that was a, you said it was a challenge for you, part of the assessment. So, and then also you said that, you know, I don't know if the actual word was ownership, but because of the revolving management or supervisor, these employees just don't, I don't think you said ownership, but that's what it sounded like to me. So I get the fact that, you know, I'd feel better, I would take more ownership of my job if I knew I was definitely going to be working here and not being moved here. If I was professionally developed, okay, in a capacity where I can do better and take more ownership. And, but you're saying there's a lot of turnover, you know, not because of that, but does everybody have clearly defined job descriptions? We keep bringing up job descriptions almost every month. Are these positions that you're asking for, we ran into more bodies, which I think is great because, you know, I think the director should also supervise. I'd rather see more people because you talk about the exorbitant amount of work that has to be done for the amount of parks we have. So when you talked about the challenges with your assessment would overlap, do you think that we should just have designated employees for parks and designated employees for DPW? Where they will grow and take ownership and be professionally developed and take, you know, more responsibility and accountability? And is that your recommendation or did I kind of hear that or am I...
Yeah, that's what I was saying. And Tom mentioned, I guess that is what's happened in the last year and a half. But yeah, I did mention, I think, let me see where it was in here, one of our recommendations was...
I think it was training and was turnover and...
I think I mentioned self-responsibility is kind of one of the things I use. But I think the ideal scenario I have in here for the organization, and this is part of the report, is having a standalone department that oversees Parks and Recreation System. That does not mean there will no longer be coordination between or cooperation with DPW. However, the park system should have its own dedicated staff and leadership to oversee park improvements, maintenance, and programming.
Well, I agree then, of course I agree.
I think, I mean, I agree that dealing with Alexis, I'm not sure specifically, the project management has been very good the last year working with the city. I think if you have, if there is a dedicated supervisor that's filling that role for Parks and Rec, that's, I think that helps the process. One thing, adding, just adding more staff will be good and helpful, but you need to have the leadership, I think, there to direct that staff properly. So I think it's having some more management as well as more employees will definitely help the parks. And that's just, that's my opinion and...
Okay, and thank you. So my second question, since the Showmobile was brought up and requires, you know, part of the overtime issues are moving it, setting it up, breaking it down. Do we charge everybody that uses it and do we charge enough to cover? Has everybody been charged for the Showmobile that used it this year?
That's a great point, Councilman. The city does have an ordinance that was passed quite a few years, I think in 2018, Bill. You voted for it. I believe it's $250 to rent it and it's $200 for the transportation, the placement and removal from the event. Now, with that being said, we do know that we live in a community that has a number of nonprofit organizations that support the city. And there is a few times, there have been a few times, that the administration reserves the right to waive that. The one that I will give an example to recently was the Veterans Celebration, okay? That fee was waived by the administration. Okay, so there is an ordinance on the books, it was passed in 2017 for a reasonable charge.
So do you think the charge is reasonable or it's not enough at this point?
I think it's reasonable.
There's a cover, there's a cover of the actual cost.
I think the charge right now, the way it was established, obviously there was some serious thought put into the matter not too long ago. I didn't do the math, I wasn't involved in that, but, you know, on the surface, it looks like it's a reasonable charge, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman McAndrew, if I can, I know there was some asks on it. I can assure you, we are getting together the list. They'll probably be in here with all the job descriptions. Hopefully on Tuesday, I'll have them all together for you. Laying out, I was going to require the department heads to bring them in, but we're going to get them all together and bring them all over to you guys, so guys and councilwoman.
Thank you.
So you'll have them.
Is there anything, any other questions specifically on the Parks and Recreation Department? No? Okay. Paul, thank you very much. I don't want to, you know, keep you here, if you want to stay, you're more than welcome. But I appreciate you coming and I do want to say too, you have, along with Tom McLean and the group, have done a phenomenal job. We can't thank you enough. Obviously, you know, we're very excited to see the final report, but I cannot stress how important this is for our park system and the city to have this master plan. It is going to do great things for the city and our park system, so thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on now to... Okay, we'll move on now to the, what I'd like to do is just go through each specific bureau of the DPW. So let's start with the DPW administration. So there's a couple things, a couple questions I have here in terms of line items. In the other salary, you spent $4,500 through September 30th, but nothing was budgeted for 2021. Could you explain that? And you don't have anything budgeted for 2022?
So the, so going back from the amendment, we didn't have any budgeted. The $4,500, again, a nominal amount, probably just a budget transfer in from the department. Not clear why the other salaries would be in there or not in there, but obviously there's, there wasn't a need, there was a $5,000 need for this year, probably a one-time expenditure on it. We didn't, it was a one-time expenditure, so.
Due to retirement.
It was due to retirement, so we just didn't move it over.
Okay. Do you pay out, you have longevity in here for $8,055, and that's steady in 2022. Does that get paid out at the end of the year?
Longevity is paid at the end of the year.
At the end of the year, okay. Overtime, overtime salary was budgeted at $2,250. You spent $12,287.52 through September 30th. Can you just, and I think we've talked about this before, because the questions have come up, but can you just explain why that is, and you only have $2,250 budgeted in 2022?
So again, we, going back to the overtime piece, there's been some changes in it. I believe that actually may have been a bit of a typo in the 2000 space. We were looking to bump that up. So, but I asked Mr. Priambo if we could talk tomorrow about it to rectify that. That may be an amended change.
So what, Director Priambo, what number should that be then, for 2022?
I'm sorry, Councilman, can you repeat the question?
Sure. What number, what number should that be? You have, the budget that we were presented with has $2,250 for overtime that you've budgeted in 2022. What, is that an incorrect figure?
So I believe that was just a, right, it was a carryover from 2021 into 2022, but we made substantial budget adjustments to the administrative overtime. We were a little bit, we responded a little bit differently this year to that. Actually, it's a classification, that was, a job classification that was removed from the administration and added into the Garage, Bureau of Garage. And that's actually Scott's job, the Fleet Services Supervisor. So to make sure that he's actually appropriately landing in the right bureau that he's responsible for as a supervisor, I recommended that we remove that from the Bureau of Administration and put it in the Bureau of Garages, just like the Bureau of Refuse has a refuse supervisor. So it's going to line up as we have all of our supervisors being charged out of the proper bureau overtime or salary. So that's actually reduced, and then we'll have some, this is a buffer that's in here, the $250,000, or, yeah, $2,250 is actually in there in case we have overtime for any of our clerical staff.
Okay. So that $12,287.52 through September 30th, that was all for the Fleet Services Supervisor?
Well, it would be a combination of the Fleet Services Supervisor and any clerical staff that would have been included in overtime.
Okay. And can you just, what are some of the duties that you would do that would require overtime? I know that's a new position, maybe, could you just explain what you do?
No, that's okay. The majority of them would probably be, you know, day-to-day breakdowns that run you past, you know, a scheduled shift, meetings that get scheduled late. Don't forget, we brought Cartograph on board, we brought Open Gov on board, we did all the Rubicon testing, you know, and all the initiatives that we're trying to get through that don't end at 1:00, you know, like when my schedule ends. So.
You work, what hours do you work?
Five to 1:00.
So if I can add to that too, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to explain this, because I know throughout the year, we've had some personal conversations about this. Since I became the Director for the Department of Public Works, I strongly believe in bringing some sound business principles from private industry into the operations of my department. And one of the things is, is cross-training. It's cross-training for individuals that are allowed by the CBA, and it's cross-training of individuals in management positions. Obviously, you know, not every single person works 52 weeks a year. Some of the supervisors are entitled to, they earn vacation time. They have debts in their families, they have sick time. So cross-training to keep the operations and provide the services to the public that they expect so that we can help keep our city safe. We have, I have initiated a cross-training program where all of our supervisors could fill in for one another to cover for their absence. That's my call, that's my responsibility. That's my responsibility to the administration, and that's my responsibility to the public. If I'm not there, if Scott's not there, if one of the other supervisors are not there, the department can still function.
Okay.
That's been my rationale. I just wanted to share that with you in public.
And so the Fleet Services Supervisor is a new position, obviously, we put in the budget last year. So can you just talk about some of the things that you've done to make the department more efficient, and give an explanation of what the, like, what you do in that position?
Well, I mean, for one, we revamped the entire master list of equipment, so that it is now up to date and accurate. Instituted the breakdown calculator so that we could start getting an accurate number for an ROI number, ROI, on all of our equipment, because it's such an aging fleet that we're to the point where we're spending more money to fix it than it's really worth keeping. So I've got all of that data put together. Again, we rolled out Rubicon, we did the test platform, we did that, that was an integral part of that. Put together the extensive lists for all of the capital projects, for all the vehicle replacement that we're going to need, which is a lot of time with vendors and, you know, and crunching numbers and investigating what we have and what we're going to need. You know, getting the garage in working order. There was three scrap sales throughout the first year. There, you know, that has to get conducted. Cleaning up the yard, I mean, obviously, the, our area where we keep all of our equipment has taken a lot of effort, you know, not just on my part, but there's a lot of people involved in that.
Okay. Thank you. Larry, this will probably be a question for you. Health insurance. You're keeping that number constant through next year. This came up on Tuesday.
Yep.
But I've been thinking about this more and more. Can we get a breakdown of costs by quarter of what healthcare? Like, and I asked this on Tuesday, but I'd like to see an analysis of where the savings are, that you're going to be able to keep that number.
So again, I think that's a question we talked about collectively bargained, right? So we are working toward that, so we did just transition that over from last year's budgeted number. But I'll work on getting you the dollars, and I'll get your report on that, what you're looking for. I'll do the best I can to lay it out. Again, it's not going to be anything moving forward, it's going to have to be something dated back from where we're at, because, again, I don't know what those costs will be based on labor negotiations.
But you're confident that that number is?
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be worse than what we had last year. Again, and I think I'll say this, that, you know, we love to be able to say that we're going to have a half a million dollar savings next year, or a three-quarter million dollar savings. Again, those benefits are negotiated, so the costs associated with it, you know, that remains to be seen. But again, we're holding it, we're going to hold it steady and, as the negotiations continue for the, again, we have four different negotiations at the same time, so.
Professional Services Director Priambo is increasing from $7,500 to $87,000. Is that for Rubicon? Is that, or is that something else?
Yes.
Okay. So that will cover the cost of that contract for next year?
That will cover the cost of the first, yes, for next year, the first year out of the three.
Now, it's also added GPS here. Is GPS part of Rubicon, or GPS is something separate?
I'm sorry, sir?
In the budget, it says Rubicon GPS implementation. Is the GPS part of the Rubicon contract?
Where does it say that?
I think it said it in, I don't know if you have the other copy, it said it in the notes next to it. I'm assuming that's Rubicon, because they're employing the GPS services.
On your page, you're talking about?
Yes. So that is part of the Rubicon piece. Now, is that, with the weights on the, on our refuse trucks, is that also part of this? The scales?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The weight scales that are now being put on the garbage trucks, is that part of this Rubicon piece?
No, it is not.
Director Priambo, the flood protection system maintenance, you budgeted $250,000 in 2021. You've spent $13,770 through September 30th. You're budgeting $500,000 in 2022. Can you talk about that?
Sure. Again, thank you for the question. That's an excellent question, and I'm happy to be here to clarify. City of Scranton is the benefactor to multiple flood systems, flood protection systems that were installed over the years, over the last, you know, 30, 40, 50 years, by the Army Corps of Engineers, the US government, the United States government, and the state of Pennsylvania, DEP. With those installations, there's an obligation that came to the city, the obligation for the city to maintain the flood protection systems, and as well to budget every single year in the event that we have a catastrophic event. And a catastrophic event is classified by the US Army Corps of Engineers. If we have a major breach in the levee alongside the Lackawanna River because of a high-water event, the city is compelled by the agreements that were agreed to by council and the US government to have money set aside every single year to do that. Last year, it was a bare minimum, we had talked about that. Because it was an austerity budget, we were able to bite the bullet. And fortunately enough, we did have some storm events that are not in our control, but we didn't have any catastrophic events where it damaged any of the infrastructure for the storm, for the flood protection systems. So the previous year, if you look back in 2019, I believe it is, it was about $496,000 that the previous administration had budgeted, and that's the reason, that's our rationale for doing this. Now, that also will help pay for additional maintenance costs that we have to have. So in each category of the flood protection systems that have been designed and built that the city benefits from, there's an agreement that the city had to follow by, it's the MNO manual. So in that manual, it requires the city have dedicated personnel to maintain the systems and specific dollar amounts. Just two of them alone, Lindy Creek and I believe it's Kaiser Creek, it's almost $100,000 that the city needs to nest egg every single year, just in case. Now, obviously, if we don't spend the money, it's a savings, all right? But we have to have the money there in case something happens, and the routine maintenance. What I did want to talk about is, one of the items that is necessary to do would be to re-tow some of the wing gates on the Lackawanna River flood protection system. They're almost 20 years old. We do inspections on an annual basis with the US Army Corps of Engineers and the DEP flood protection people, and we have been notified that the tow in some of these wing closures have to be adjusted. That is a very, very costly expense. However, if you don't do that maintenance, if you don't do the preventative maintenance, and if you don't do the funding, if that structure fails, it's going to be an awful lot more expense to the city of Scranton.
Thank you. I have a few more questions, but I'll hog the whole thing. Anyone else have questions on the Administration Bureau?
Just going back to the Rubicon real quick, the professional services. In the proposal we got, it says it was $165,000. Is that over two years?
That's over a three-year period.
That's over, it's over three years?
Yes.
I didn't know if it was, if that pricing was per year, or if it was over the life of the contract.
No, the way it's broken down, it should be, it should be in your backup at the very top, the description. Pricing for Scranton, Pennsylvania, seven, first year, $76,525.80. Second year, $44,350.80. And the third year, $44,350.80. I'm sorry, my glasses are fogging up.
It's okay.
That should be in your backup.
Any other questions on the Administration Bureau?
Yeah, so when I'm looking at this, at least, well, all of the positions in the salary schedule have increases. Are these positions, are you looking at them as a case-by-case, in a case-by-case method, where you feel these positions each need, or the person in the position has done that well of a job that we should move them up 10,000, 11,000, 11,000? Or is it part of the investment of human capital that the mayor was talking about on Tuesday?
You're talking about the management supervisors?
Yeah, the Director of Recycling and Safety, Emergency Management.
Again, just trying to get, just trying to get salaries compatible. Again, try to, this is one thing, we do have some great staff that are working at DPW, they've done a great job. I'm certainly not speaking for anyone who's working there, but just trying to get the salaries competitive so that we do have some retainment there. I know for a fact you've lost a couple employees, skilled employees, and mechanic in particular, too, lost them to the turnpike and other businesses, simply because they're paying more. Again, I know we can't change some of those things because they are contractual, but in places where I think we can make a difference and make those investments, we probably should take a look at it.
Yeah, I guess in general, my question was, was it performance-based increases, or was it to get the, you know?
Well, it's actually both. The performance, I think the DPW and the work that's been done up there, some of the corrections that have been made, they speak for themselves. Director Priambo and his entire team have done a great job up there. Again, I was in here last year, but I did see some pictures of what the equipment yard looked like prior to. I know they've done a great job in really streamlining it and making it a more efficient space up there. So that's a combination, both in reward of some of the work that they've done, they continue to do. They have spent their time in there, but it's also, again, investing in human capital, because we do have some experienced supervisors, and we'd like to retain them.
Shot a quick one. So when you talk about performance, and that's great. Are there formal evaluations conducted on employees on a yearly basis in your department? At least for Administration?
So the Administration, I'm not aware of an exact evaluation process. I did indeed ask if there was a process by which, obviously, the Administration, the BI can't evaluate every single employee in the city, but certainly for department heads. The answer I got is they were working on doing an evaluation process, at least in terms of my position for management. In terms of the, each department head, I don't think every department has a standard policy, but it is something we've talked about, about getting something a little more established and something a little more regular so that we do have a standard of evaluating.
Do you know if that's conducted in any department in the city? Formal yearly evaluations?
I'm not aware of it.
There are a lot of big raises, and, you know, I worked in the real world, you know, prior to teaching, and I was part of that process, and it was yearly or sometimes twice a year. I'm just, you know, because we talk about job descriptions, the lack thereof, we talk about large increases, and I know some of this investment, and I get all that, but is it based on any type of evaluation?
Certainly, again, I concur with you that there should be some basis for which we evaluate and retain our employees. Again, I've only been here for five months, so I am trying to sift through some of the human resources and some of those procedures. Obviously, we identify some shortcomings, trying to address them.
I'll just simplify it. Can you just find out for me if anybody's evaluated?
I will do that.
On a yearly basis in this building?
Sure.
Or any department outside of it?
I will.
Thank you.
I'll get back to you on that, I'll let you know.
Anyone else on the Bureau of Administration?
So now, when I look at that overtime piece, one thing that did stick out to me, which Mr. Gahan pointed out first, is the overtime salary is at, the amended budget for 2021 is $2,250, and the working budget for 2022 is also $2,250. When I look at the overtime report, that's the piece that it went over six times the amount of that. So I was looking, that was going to be one of the first questions I asked you, is, don't we think we should raise this, being how much we went over last year? But now, you did say it moved over to garages, so when I'm looking at garages and going back into past budgets, it's always been about $25,000 a year, so this year it jumps up to $60,000, which is $35,000 increase. Do you see, are we going to spend that much on overtime in that section for that line item this year?
I would certainly hope not, Councilman, but we have to prepare as a department for the unexpected. Okay, the unexpected things that happen that the city services, our department provides. The unexpected things that happen that the city services, our department provides, weather events, all right? We all know that our country is dealing with, around the world, climate change, all right? So, climate change and events that come to the city just don't happen 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Our department works one shift, okay? When we have storm events, when we respond to the 32 winter events that we had this, just this year alone, from January 1 to the beginning of March, or the middle of March, our department works overtime, 24/7 sometimes. The supervisors are cross-trained, so some supervisors can go home and get some rest and the other supervisors will come in and work additional hours. That overtime happens. When I looked at the possibilities that we may need to respond to based on current events that happened just this year alone, we need to be prepared as a city. And that's why that budget is where it is, that's why Scott's position has been moved so it specifically reflects the duties and responsibilities in the Bureau of Garage. I hope that helps with the rationale.
Yeah, now will that, we said earlier that it might be a typo, that the one for, the line item for Administration was at 2250.
That was my comment. That was my comment.
Okay, is that going to be increased or is that what?
No, I corrected that. I said where it is now on the front on Administration, $2,250, that's staying where it is, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Councilman Schuster, just to clarify, I had a question mark on my page about that. That's why I was the one that made the comment about it, but Director Prambo clarified it.
And it does seem, you know, looking across, I mean, I know we're talking about Administration right now, but engineering has gone up, highways is up, so it's going to go across all categories of DPW, correct?
That's correct. Engineering, that's another facet of stormwater control, all right? Our Bureau of Engineering has our three flood protection maintenance personnel that are in there. They are responsible for, no, bless you. They are responsible for, just alone, they're responsible for the Lackawanna River levee, which entails 3.5 miles of grass cutting every two weeks. Some of that grass cutting cannot happen during the day when they first come in. They'll do other things during the day because of the dew, the soil is wet, the grass is wet, and under conditions for the concerns of safety and the equipment and the men, because of the slopes, the angles of the levees, the way they're built, we have to wait until the afternoon. So they'll do other things, they'll work on maintenance of the pumps, they'll work on maintenance of the sluice valves, they'll weed whack throughout the day, and then they'll stay extra hours in the afternoon while the sun is out dry, you know, prior to sun drying the grass. They'll work later in the evenings. They just did it this past week. So, yes, we're responsible for a tremendous amount of flood protection maintenance to, I'm only talking about Bloom, I'm only talking about the Lackawanna River. You know, there's five other, six other major tributaries that they need to maintain. And on rainy days like this afternoon, they have to come in on Saturdays and do that. They have to come in and do it on the weekends. So if this is the service that we want to continue to provide and have the city safe and be prepared when we have these catastrophic weather events and deal with climate change, that's why that budget is increased.
Yeah, and in terms of the budget, when we're looking at this, I'm not saying it's not jobs that need to be done or work that needs to be done, I just like to see it accurately depicted in the budget so I know what we're looking for going into next year.
I'm sorry, you broke up. You like to see it accurately what?
Accurately depicted in the budget as we're going into next year. You know, we're having these overruns, but if it was budgeted out to begin with, they wouldn't be over.
It was budgeted low because it was an austerity budget this year. So, based off of my projections, this is what the overtime budget should be.
Okay.
Any other questions for Administration, DPW?
I need a break, remember tape.
Okay, we're going to take a two-minute break so he could switch his tape, and then we'll, I don't think we have much more. Okay. We want to thank Chris too from ECTV who does a great job. He had to change the tape back there, DVD. Okay, so we were left off talking about the engineering department, and I just have two or three more questions on that. Director Prambo, capital expenditures, $940,000 for 2022. Can you just talk about what that entails?
Sure. What that also includes is the cost share for the city for some of the, or for the construction of the Astory Bridge, okay? Construction of the Bloom Avenue culvert. Also, it may be, it's also used for the Royenbrook Flood Control Channel and the Kaiser Valley Mayorfield Avenue. We have some monies put aside from there. You know that we recently did, and we're wrapping it up, we're waiting for the final review from GPI Engineering for the stormwater study for West Mountain area. It was really an eye-opener, the first round of the preliminary review from the engineers. We're just waiting to get some more data, they're waiting to get some more data from the Turnpike Commission on their outfalls, and we'll have that final report. I did share with the Administration, but we'll have a final report out in the coming weeks. Initially, they did show about $9 million worth of improvements that's really required in there. So, this budget has, that line item has money in there to help support the beginning of the corrections of the stormwater runoff in West Mountain.
Okay.
I could actually add a little bit to that. The Administration and Ms. Ali Soprani was here last night, or on Tuesday night, but we talked about that brick and application for a grant. It's a federal grant, and it's an acronym for something, it's a BRIC is the acronym. But we are making an application, the city is going to apply for eight or eight and a half million dollars, forgive me on the exact total, but we're making an application for that grant that will help defray or offset some of the costs. There is a match to it from the city, but again, I think it's based on the analysis that's been given, it's another investment that we just need to make over in the west side. I know there's been a ton of complaints regarding it. Again, my short time here, been a ton of complaints about some of the flooding and the issues over in the west side of Kaiser Valley.
So we have contacted the turnpike because, I mean, there's definitely, the displacement of water that comes off the turnpike has definitely changed some of the channels there up on the, up on West Mountain. I did bring Chris Jenkins and the mayor, we did take a walk up to the turnpike to see some of that, so they are...
That is correct, Councilman Schuster. They're initially, the request for information and data was denied, so GPI, the engineering firm that's conducting the study for us, had to do a right to know. So we're waiting for that information to come back to us. It's very important to have a full picture and all the data of the attributes that are causing, all of the attributes that are causing the stormwater runoff issues that we're experiencing on the West Mountain. So, it was prudent on GPI's part to seek out that additional information so we can truly have a bona fide stormwater study that identifies where the surcharges are, what the surcharges amounts are, and where and how we should deal with that.
So above...
And to that point too, in the meantime, okay, with some of the input that you have provided our department and some of the input that the GPI engineers have provided, we have taken small steps, including your neighborhood, to address stormwater runoff issues, clearing out pipes, rebuilding the gutters, making sure the headwalls are cleaned. So, I absolutely appreciate that intel coming into our department.
Yeah, that, I mean, that water starts at the turnpike. I think what you said was the turnpike made $9 million worth of improvements up there, so they've definitely changed some of what they're doing that's causing some displacement. Cricks that, creek beds that used to run between homes are now running through homes, and it's causing problems from there to the pump house.
So, to your point, that's a really good layman's analysis, but in order to have something firmly in our hands to bring the Turnpike Commission in as a partner, to bring PNDOT in as a partner, we need an actual technical analysis, and I strongly recommend, I strongly commend council for approving that stormwater study when we received the RFP from GPI. That was a good call. Thank you for that.
Welcome. Director Prambo, can you give us an update on the paving program? I know that this year it seemed like it was a little late and we're into November. Has that been completed yet? Is it...
No, the fall, well, we call the summer/fall paving program, actually had a little bit of a late start. Some of the technical data, the design got tied up with our engineers. Again, we had some issues with getting the data back from the utility companies so that we can actually finalize a complete list that we know that we could pave, and in two weeks the utility companies are not going to come by behind us and start doing any type of line restorations where it would disturb the new pavement. So, getting that information into our engineers, our project engineers, took a little bit of a while from the utility companies. We, you know, we've had a changeover in the law department, so there was a little bit of a lag in having a contract created through the law department and getting it out to the contractors, but it kind of coincided with the contractor's schedule, they weren't really ready to come here and do anything. But they did start last week, they're taking advantage of the weather. We prioritized out of the $2.7 million paving project, we split it in half, we have a fall paving priority list and we have a spring paving priority list. So, the contractor started last week on Boulevard Avenue. I do know it's a hot topic for all of the council members, we've all received phone calls about that, and it really did need it, in my honest opinion and our engineers, it was the highest priority on the list to pave Boulevard Avenue. With that, there's some stormwater controls with elevations to the, to the top surface, to the overlays that we're doing, we actually did some base repair because the roadway was actually deteriorating to the point where it requires some more extensive base repair before we can do a scratch coat and an overlay. So, right now, I can report to council that the base repair has been done on Boulevard Avenue from City Line and Troup to Oliphant Avenue, and Oliphant Avenue from Boulevard Avenue to basically Parker Street. That has received a scratch coat because the weather is not so good tonight, but we're hoping that the sun comes out tomorrow and the temperature is good. They will be out there paving that tomorrow or on Saturday.
So the paving program is now split? It was supposed to happen this fall, but because of, you're saying a lag, or something with the law department not getting information or...
Well, it actually started with the delay in finalizing the specifications for the project because we were getting, having a delay with getting the information from the utility companies. And we know that, you know, they don't work for us. I don't have any strong leverage to tell them to tell me what they're going to be doing on all aspects of their projects, and sometimes it takes them a while to determine. They have to, they actually go out and do leak testing. They actually look at their books to see how old their infrastructure is, their underground infrastructure is, if they need to do any type of repair work prior to us doing that. And that sometimes falls into their engineering division. So, they do their own in-house analysis, and sometimes that does take time.
So, will the information from the utility companies, will that still be appropriate and valid for the springtime when you start?
No, everything has been cleared. The entire list has been cleared, that's why we bid it out in its entirety. So, once we bid it out in its entirety, it's been totally cleared by the utility companies. Now, with that said, we do know how aging infrastructure sometimes, you know, shows its ugly head, and it comes back after winter time. Many of the systems that are pressurized, i.e. the gas and water, they do start to see some fractures, they do start to see some blowouts, if you want to say, and they have to go in and do some, some of the street repair. Our engineering firm and our contractor, we stay in close communications with the utility companies. So that would be like going forward, anything that we can't get done this year, we'll revisit that with them next year to see at the spring startup, is there anything that they need to do before we go in and do anything?
How long, how long did it take you to get information from the utility company? When did you, when did the DPW ask them for that information? Because I've never seen that happen before. When we've in the past have had paving programs, and you know this because you've run them before, it's happened, I mean, sometimes they've been a little late, but never to the point where you had, I don't think that you've had to split them up. So, to me, that's unacceptable.
Well...
If the utility company was withholding information, that doesn't make sense to me.
I wouldn't say it's, I don't think, Councilman Gahan, I don't think it's fair to say that they were withholding information. I think it was a delay in their analysis of their systems that are out there that serve the public. They wanted to give us a educated decision as to what it is that they have to look at, what it is that they may have to do down the road. So, that's why there's some, it's a very, very large paving list, right? So, it's quite extensive.
Could it cost us more money because it's split into next year? In other words, if the price of things go up because of the situation?
No, the contract has a no escalation cost in it. So, they're not allowed, the contractors are not allowed. We actually have that written in on the front end when we bid that, when we go to pre-bid conference, we tell the contractors, there's no cost of escalation in the contract.
And when did they...
So whatever they bid, that's what they bid.
When did they get us the information that we needed?
I don't have that information for you tonight, Mr. Gahan. I can probably find that in the next couple of days.
Let me add something to that too, Councilman. Doing Boulevard Avenue, as everyone here is aware, we're taking on, the city has turned over four bridges over to PNDOT for design and construction throughout the city. Part of, part of the discussion with the DPW and identifying some of these main routes was because PNDOT had asked us to reevaluate and to take care of some of these roads because we had to make detour routes, okay? So Boulevard Avenue four, and I'm going to get to your point about, we, the mayor used a comment today about changing the goalposts, we did some, some of the things that we were doing was we were adding, we were adding streets onto it because we recognized that although Boulevard Avenue was a, was a real, was a real trouble spot, it is identified as a federally designated K route. So then we tried to review to see if we could get some K route funding for it. That's going to take several years to do. So the city would have decided that it was in our best interest to go ahead and design that out and get it done this year. So, to the point that Director Prambo was pointing out is, there were some add-ons to it, the $2.7 million contract that was signed, it was a bigger, bigger paving, more roads were included in that, we were adding some things to it, the utilities got back. Again, these analyses and maybe, maybe your experience may have had where things had gone simpler, I don't know what the, what the real reason for utilities were, but at the end of the day, we were processing the information, we were trying to get the contracts out the door, and we got it, and we got a pricing that takes us through this year and for the part of next year. So, we got a fair pricing that doesn't have any escalation in it, it's a good price, as Director Prambo pointed out, and we're getting the work done, so.
And that Boulevard Avenue work is going to be able to be done? Because it seems to me that the temperature, I don't know, when can you stop paving?
It's not a matter of when you can stop paving, it's when the, when the batch plants stop producing the asphalt. They shut down for the winter time. Sometimes they'll run it till the middle of December. It's the batch plants that provide, that produce the product that shut down, they shut down for three months when it gets too cold. It's not so much dictated about the temperature of it, it's when the contractors really stop getting the work because they, it is too cold to do the work. So, the batch plant will shut down, that'll be dictated, and for right now, they're still pumping out asphalt and we're going to keep paving roads.
The specification that we follow and the specification that's built into our contract is a 408 publication from PNDOT, and it's 40 degrees and rising. That's what we do. And the project is under inspection. There's boots on the ground from our engineering firm. They actually go out, they monitor what the temperature is, they monitor when the asphalt is going down, and they have the authority to tell them to stop or continue. So that's the specification that we follow, the same as PNDOT, under the 408 publication.
And I'll also say, let me add to that, is because of those bridges and the design and the construction and the timing of it, I believe they start in 2023, our bridges do, so they're doing two and two. So when I worked for the Senator's Office, I worked with the City of Scranton at the time to get those bridges moved up on the state tip line so they get the funding for it. It's 85% federal funded, or no, it's 80%, federal funded, 50% state, and 5% local match. So we did get those four bridges moved up. Little did I know, five years later, to be right back on my desk now creating detours and paving roads to make sure these all, all these projects happen. But the fact is that there's a lot of coordination because two, all four of them will be happening at the same time. They'll just be a year apart in terms of their, of their construction. But, there's a lot of coordination that goes into making sure that the, that the public access routes, the bus routes, emergency routes, all those things are taken into consideration. There's a lot of coordination between PNDOT and our departments and the administration to make sure that as they were going into these construction seasons for these bridges, and they're just our bridges, the Greenridge Street Bridge is also going to be under construction next year. So there's coordination between the administration, DPW, and PNDOT. Again, that's their bridge, but our pedestrians need to cross the river. So, keep in mind, I know, I know there's always a lot of questions about things, but I can assure you that there's no lack of work in the city as it relates to maintaining or managing some of these projects. And that coordination with paving the streets, although it was, it's an obvious on some of them because the city needs to be responsible for maintaining good streets, there's also a need because PNDOT was asking for some assistance. a need because Pendott was asking for some assistance in making sure that those routes were, were indeed, they were passable. So it wasn't just us saying, oh, let's, you know, let's go fix Boulevard Avenue, although it needed to be fixed. There are other, there are other reasons why we were addressing it and why it got moved up on the list.
So, so we don't anticipate this being an issue again next year? Or is there anything that we can do to prevent this from occurring again?
Are you asking if there'd be a problem again for the paving?
What's that?
I'm not sure it was a problem for paving. We paved in the springtime. We added, we had an extra larger, we had a bigger list later on this year, but.
No, I think she's asking, is this, how do you prevent this from happening again? We have a fall paving program that now is leaking over into the spring, but the program was supposed to happen during the summer and the fall.
I don't think, I don't think there's any set timing on the programming. It's, it's when the contractors are available to do the work. Most of those contractors won't, won't come in and do city streets or municipal streets in the summertime. They are doing larger paving interstate projects and other projects. They don't even, most of those contractors, you won't get them to come in. That's why they do them in the spring and the fall. So there's no real set reason why, you could pave all summer long. It's that you're going to pay a premium because those, those contractors that do that paving, they're paving interstates. They're paving larger projects. So we, we get them in the spring and the fall because they're smaller, the bigger work is done for the, for the, for the construction year. So that's why we do it this way. That's why the municipalities do spring and summer, or spring and fall. So again, you could get them for the summertime. If we want to, we want to bid them out for the, to do construction in July and get popular construction or any other construction companies, we can get them. We're going, we're going to pay for them. So we're not going to get the favorable rates. So to say that, you know, should we do it again next year? I think it's the same process. And don't forget, we're not the only municipality looking to pave our streets. There are other municipalities now that have those dollars around. So I think it's only going to get worse in terms of timing and trying to get contractors to do the work. But I think the DPW does a great job in identifying and prioritizing the streets and we'll continue to monitor them and do them. And again, the work that was done this contract, at the $2.7 million contract, was a good solid rate that just happens to carry over for next year. So.
Any other questions for engineering? Okay, let's move to highways, the Bureau of Highways. Director Priambo, you're budgeting $360,000 for rental vehicles and equipment. You only budgeted $50,000 in 2021. Do you want to give us a rationale for that?
Sure. So once again, it's about preparedness and readiness, having a budget that would support any type of weather event that we have in the city. So the rental vehicles could include anything from additional trash pumps that we had to do when Hurricane, I believe it was Hurricane Ida. We rented some trash pumps. We had to rent some work lights in case we had to work throughout the evening. It also, it also includes the additional equipment that we feel that the department's going to need in order to keep the city safe, provide the essential services for our highways department. So that's why it's a combination of both rental and equipment as well.
Can you talk to us about the new, two new positions? So you're asking for a highway supervisor at $50,000 and you're asking for, and that's a non-union position, and you're asking for heavy equipment operator slash craftsman, DPW union position in the amount of $48,988.99. So can you give us the rationale for both of those?
Sure. So as we know, and myself coming from private industry, you can basically follow through with that in municipal government. Wherever you have employees, if it isn't monitored, it isn't done. You specifically brought up Mr. McAndrew before about evaluations. Is there evaluation process for employees? It's the same thing when you need to have a certain level, number of individuals doing a specific task, doing it the right way, doing it at the right time. So I believe that we are understaffed with supervision in the Department of Public Works, specifically in the Department of Highways. So that's the reason, that's my rationale. If we expect something to get it done, we need to monitor it. If it's not monitored, it's not going to get done, especially the way we want it to get done and with the quality that we want it to get done.
Who supervises these employees now? Whose job is that supervising?
Actually, we're using the refuse supervisor. It's a split, it's a combination. I talked about cross-training with the supervisors. Supervisor Jenkins, who is a manager and a special ops supervisor for the emergency coordination, he works along with Steve Teeman and with Scott for the three bureau, actually the three bureaus, which is, you know, the, the Department or Bureau of Highways, Department or Bureau of Refuge and Department of, or Bureau of Garages. So right now, I just have three supervisors do that and to support the special needs that we provide for the Parks Department as well.
Excuse me, is the safety slash recycling coordinator a supervisor?
She's, she's a program supervisor. Last year, we converted with the, with the approval of City Council, we had, took the recycling coordinator position and made it into a recycling slash safety program supervisor. So this supervisor specifically runs programming for our safety initiatives that are newly created in the department since last summer and to increase our capacity and our reporting abilities for recycling. She works the same hours that I do. She does not come in for roll call. She does not supervise specific individuals. However, she is a supporting supervisor for the Bureau supervisors and running the safety program and recycling program.
So is that something like similar to like a compliance officer, someone that understands OSHA guidelines?
It's all part of that, sir. Yes, yes. And that's, it's really never had anything like that. We never really had a focus on anything like that in the department. This was actually history-making when council approved that crossover from an older title to a newer title. So I commend you and I appreciate your efforts to do that. We have made tremendous strides in the department for safety awareness programming, individual training. We do onboard training program for every single new employee, whether they're casual or full-time. And that supervisor helps to, helps us to find additional training that we need that fits our department. And she would actually be intimately involved in any additional training that we will provide for any heavy equipment operators to get the programming in. And then we'll use the special, the individuals that are subject, what I consider subject matter experts in the department to actually train the individuals beyond that point.
If I could just add to that, and I'm, I'm not sure what the programming was prior to, but I could only talk from my personal experience when, again, in another community, is the reporting on recycling. I'm not sure what, what the city does in terms of what it used to do in terms of reporting, but I could tell you that the better we report, the more, the more accurate we report, the actual tonnage of cardboard and paper and co-mingle and even, even getting some of the rubber and tires out of our community, the more we collect and report it accurately, the more dollars we get back from the state. Number two, I think the, the, the part of, and again, this is just, I know it's, I know it's another piece that the DPW does, but the more we collect, the more it becomes second nature for, for residents to do it, the less we put out in tipping fees. So building up that recycling program, being, being proactive with it, being supportive of it, does a couple of things. One, it gets us more dollars back from the state as we report. And then number two, it's, it's less money in actual trash in our tipping fees. So the dollars we're putting in to a recycling coordinator or anyone who's, who's tied into that program, the more we can collect and recycling report it, the better off the city is in a bunch of different ways.
So one of the examples I would like to share with council tonight, that you really don't see it on the budget because it's reimbursable. Because of our efforts on recycling, we're actually purchased, I ordered it in January, the leaf vacuum truck. We expect to receive that sometime early next year. That's being paid with the recycling grants that we receive from DEP. We also, we're in a position this year, we were told that the award will happen and we're going to purchase another Pacmaster for recycling, all the total cost of $400,000. And that's with the efforts of us promoting, the department promoting, the city promoting recycling and having the supervisors, having the individual in the department to process the application, submit the application, and then the city could receive those funds once we purchase it. We pay for it first, it's reimbursable. So I think the hats off to everybody that's involved with that, including City Council. $400,000 is coming in equipment that's at no cost.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the Bureau of Highways?
Chris, very briefly, I don't know if you trust this or not, but where is the, the city engineer in the budget? Is that, it's in the engineering department?
That's under, under engineer, right.
And where, that's being RFP'd right now? Is that correct?
Yes.
What's the status?
It's actually not in RFP. I'm sorry. That's actually in the ECMS system from Pendott. Pendott had notified us a few months ago that in order to, in order to be the recipient of some of the state funding that could be used to offset the cost of some of the bridge repairs, Pendott has a requirement that your city engineer is vetted through the ECMS system that Pendott monitors. So we had to do the proper, you know, proper adjustments with that. Larry is very familiar with that process and you can speak a little bit more on it than I can.
We, we just adjusted the, the RFP that went out there to meet the Pendott's ECMS requirements as out there right now. As a matter of fact, they've, they've returned in the bids and they're actually going through the process of picking the engineer as we speak, literally in real time.
I have one additional question on that. The, under the Department of, the Bureau of Highways, the traffic and sign maintenance employees, you have three employees there. There, are they a part of the, it says they're a part of the clerical union. Are they?
That's correct, sir.
That's correct. Okay. Okay, moving on to the Bureau of Refuge. So one of the major things that sticks out here is the capital expenditures again. I know last year you put nothing in there. This year you have $1.2 million. So can you give us a breakdown of what you're, what you're spending that on?
Sure, I'll pass that off to Scott.
That is to replace the aging fleet of refuse trucks. We currently have two sitting in the yard right now that are out of service for failures and that they will not pass state inspections. So we are going to purchase five new 20-yard trucks and one new 11-yard truck. All right? Part of that was to address the accidents, some of the incidents that we've had around the city, the overgrown, the small alleyways. So the trucks are a little bit smaller, which will make them a little more maneuverable. And also reacting to the phone calls and the emails we've gotten from DEP about overloading of the trucks. So again, we get back to the weight scales that we were putting on the truck. It's really a monitoring system, trying to get out in front of that. So that's what that cost is going to be, was for six new trucks this year.
And how many garbage trucks, you said you have, how many are serviceable right? How many total do you have? And then how many, you said two are out of service?
Yes, right.
And how many total?
I currently have 11 refuse trucks.
And you're purchasing six?
Not, that's not including the two, the two rentals that we have. And then there's four recycle trucks.
Okay.
And how many, what, what are the routes then? How many routes are there? Is there 11?
There's, there's, there's 10 routes.
There's 10 refuse routes and then?
And then there's four recycle routes, but there's 11 routes Monday and Tuesday. They are the extras.
Okay.
You know? And obviously, we're hoping when we get out of COVID that that tonnage is going to start working its way back down, but right now, it's still, it's still massive.
But in terms of making the investment in new garbage trucks, which I agree with, shouldn't we be then make, you know, making an investment in the maintenance side of it with, you know, a second shift mechanic so that, you know, we're not taking trucks necessarily off the road for us to do the proper maintenance on them?
Yeah, absolutely. That's a good question, Councilman Gahan or Donahue. I don't disagree with that. That actually was part of a recommendation that the department made to the administration. However, at the end of the road, I understand that I might have a big ask, but I have to work with what I, what the, what the city could afford. And at this point in time, you know, the focus right now is to provide the management support necessary to make sure that we get things done the way we want them to get done and also to have a vibrant park system. So it's a human capital investment. At this point in time, I'm going to defer that request until next year. Actually, next year, I'm going to be submitting to council in our budget to the administration that we have two individuals on second shift for safety purposes in the auto services center. I hope that helps to answer your question.
If we can get a list of Larry, and this goes for all departments, any, because there is, there are large increases in the capital expenditures, just for the pure fact that there was nothing spent last year for the most part. So if we can just get a breakdown for each department of what you're spending, the, what you intend to purchase through the capital expenditures?
I'm sorry, with the question, you want to know what we're planning on spending?
So I'd just like a breakdown, like we just asked Scott and six trucks. I just like, because we're going to have departments coming in and out over the next two weeks. If we can just be provided with a breakdown of the line items, a million dollars, every time they come in, we're going to ask, what's that for? So if you can give us a breakdown of, it's six trucks here, it's whatever.
Well, just so you know, we, we did propose and I think you guys accepted a capital budget for this year, for 2022. So anything that's in the capital itemization line or capital itemization, capital expenditure line is coming out of the capital budget. So, so whether, whether, I, I think the total number there, check and see for 2022 off the top of my, is it, is it the 10 million or 8 million? What's our total ask?
Yeah, sometimes with the capital budget, it's not, I know that's a wish list, so it's not clear, is that for next year?
So let me be clear, that, that, I know it's always been referred to as the wish list, but, but the fact is that we did a lot of work, not making it a wish list, but making it an actual expenditure list that we could actually work off from year to year so that, so when we're planning these things, whether it's buying packers or buying plow trucks or buying a fire truck or buying whatever it is, that we actually have a plan. So the wish list that has always been called, I can refrain from calling it a wish list. It's actually a capital investment list. So we really should be working off of it. So, so the truth is, after all the, for the last five months, all I've been hearing is it, is it in the budget, is in the budget, is in the budget. Fact is, we worked hard on making that capital expenditure list accurate so that in future budgets, so what we don't get captured in 2022, that may, maybe the expenses or maybe the revenues fall and we, we're not able to spend the full amount on the capital, maybe we're going to buy six, six packers and maybe a grass cutter and whatever, maybe a brush hog or whatever, whatever the next expense is going to be. Maybe by November of next year, we, maybe the dollars aren't there. We push that off to 2023, but it's still, it's still listed on the capital expenditure list. So this list, although at one time it's been referred to many times since I've been here as that wish list, I prefer to call it a capital expenditure list because that's really what it should be. Some departments may wish they had everything and I get that's where the moniker comes from, but really, it's, it's really a planning tool that we really should be paying attention to. And I'll say that this is my first runaround with the departments. We did this back in, in early August, I believe, late July, early August. They really did a great job of narrowing those things in because it, it is not easy to plan for a million dollar fire truck and a million dollar engine or an engine and an engine and then a ladder truck that costs, you know, 2.3 million dollars. So it's critical that we have this planning so we know in the future what those expenditures are. And if you see that, I mean, they, on the capital budget, that first year, we, it was a, it was a pretty high number because we're trying to make up from, from last year in terms of capital investment. But if you see, it does kind of go down a little bit or it levels. But those numbers will eventually go up because what we didn't get this year, it'll just keep pushing. And we all know the cost of equipment and, and supplies continues to increase. So again, I'm sorry to belabor that piece, but that's where the expenditures come from.
And I think to what you're saying is the, I mean, these, some of these Pacmasters and recycling trucks have been in the capital expenditures for the last three years.
That's right.
But what, so what I'm looking at here is it's saying 1.2 million, that's only for three trucks though, correct?
Yeah.
It's not for the full six?
It's for six trucks.
It's for the six trucks? Okay. On my, on my copy, I have three Pacmasters listed.
Well, there may, so some of the notes that are on the side of that, some of them have been changed.
So that's a confusion, I think, too, is that it's, okay.
Some of the asks were, just so you know, some of the narratives are in there. So maybe the initial ask was for three, for three full-size packers and a, and then a smaller packer. And then eventually they come back around and say, listen, we already had the two rentals, can we, can we expense six of them? So that's where the, so that was an internal negotiation. So, that's where the, so that was an internal negotiation, there were internal notes that were on that, so.
So, this one here, the 1.2 is definitely six PAC masters?
Yes, sir.
The last capital budget I saw had maybe three PAC masters and two recycling trucks, something like that, it was a little bit different of a breakdown. So, currently, we have 11 refuse trucks, including the two that are off the road, or we have 13?
We have 11.
So, we have 11, so, right now, the two rentals are making up for that 11 that are on the street?
Correct.
Almost daily, okay.
Let me just add to that, that's, and I know you, they didn't mention it here tonight, but that's what a real service plan, that's utilizing your trucks on a regular basis, hoping that one doesn't break down, you're not trying to leave one in for regular maintenance and service on it. So, again, preparing a maintenance plans, and just trying to be proactive with them, it just takes time, and I, and listen, I, we talked about it here today, I know we've been distressed for 30 years, I'm not saying we should wave the wand and fix everything tomorrow, but putting together a plan and working through the process is really what the idea is here, and trying to find ways forward, so that we're making these investments, and they're lasting for the city.
It says dispatcher first, move to highways, but they're still in the refuse department, is that a mistake?
The intent was to move them to highways, if dispatcher, you're talking about, okay, on the salary sheet?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, on the position and title breakdown?
Okay.
For the Bureau of Refuse, it says dispatcher first, move to highways.
Yeah, we have two, we have, let's see, watch person in highways, and a dispatcher second shift, so, yes, it should have been moved, but it's not moved, sir. So, right now, it's still landing in refuse.
Okay.
But we still need three dispatchers.
Okay. Any other questions on the Bureau of Refuse? Okay, coming to the end here, gentlemen, appreciate it. Bureau of Garages, capital expenditures again, Tom, $345,000, is that for additional equipment, or?
Sure, that's actually, we have an aging diesel island and a pump and an overhead, so that has to be replaced, this facility's 17 years old, that pump system and the island itself, the pump itself, the dispenser, we can't get parts for. Every single time it breaks, it becomes a massive challenge. A couple of times this year, it became a larger challenge because of the effect of supply chain shortages due to COVID, we actually couldn't use our pump station at a couple of days that we had throughout the year. So, we're proposing that that will be replaced, along with some additional lifts that are required in the service bay area. Just bear with me one second. Okay, I mentioned replacing the diesel fuel island and the pump station, rebuilding the auto repair pit in the garage, it's severely damaged, and the drainage system doesn't work correctly, so that needs to be restored, and purchasing heavy equipment lifts and other related equipment and technology and software for the garage.
Okay.
That's basically the items, sir.
And if I could just add to that, the oil-changing pit that Director Prambo was referring to, there was an issue with it earlier this year, we did have to have the city engineer go out to inspect to make sure it was at least serviceable, which it is, but they indicated that there needs to be some major repairs to it, so, that needs to be taken care of, addressed.
Anyone else on the Bureau of Garages?
What's the increase in the overtime line item in garages attributed to? Is it just getting, is it just being consistent in what we actually spend there?
What we had talked about earlier on, having the garage prepped for the uncertainty events that happen, keep in mind, we work 11 Saturdays a year, there's 11 holidays that the department observes, so there's 11 Saturdays in overtime, we should have three mechanics in the, in the, four, we should have four mechanics dedicated to just DPW, and then Scott is being moved into the department or Bureau of Garages as well, that I talked about earlier. So, you know, in order to have our budget prepared for any of the uncertainties, and to cover the contractual obligations that we work on a Saturday to pick up trash and recycling due to observing of a holiday, that's the reason for the additional there, sir. And snow events, any of the uncertainty with the weather events that we have throughout the year.
Okay. Any other questions on the Bureau of Garages? Any other questions that takes care of all the bureaus? Any other questions in general for Mr. Prambo, Mr. Wester, Scott?
I think, any questions on the Rubicon contract?
Sure, we can talk about that now if you'd like.
So, let's see, I don't know if anybody else had any questions on it in particular, but?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Do we have any, when looking at the contract, it's $165,000 contract that's split between, is it two years?
Three.
Three years? Do we need more details, do you feel that we need more details in the contract as to specific tasks that Rubicon is going to perform?
I'm sorry, sir, do you, do I feel?
Yeah, do you feel that the city needs more details in these tasks?
No, actually, I think they provided a very much appropriated, appropriate RFP to us. Keep in mind, the city has already had an experience, a relationship with Rubicon, last year, late last year into early this year, they did a three-month trial period for us, free of charge. That included training for our staff, our staff supervisors, training for our drivers, and getting us all familiar with their onboarding for the software, to use the software and the technology that's right at our desktops. So, based on that, based on that experience that we've had for the three and a half months that the trial period took place, I feel that what they submitted to us is reasonable, because we already have that relationship, we already have that knowledge, and the fact that they weren't a low bidder, and they didn't change any of their attributes that they're going to provide to the city. What they promised us that they could provide last year, we put that into an RFP, we bid that out, and with Kevin's help, Solicitor Hayes' help, I'm sorry, we were able to attain a good package to be delivered to you for consideration.
Tom, I think, I'm sorry to interrupt, I think the issue is, if, when you look at the contract that's going to bind them for the next three years, it doesn't specifically spell out what the tasks that we want them to perform are over the next three years. So, I think if, maybe that's something that we can work on together, I understand there was an RFP, and there was a proposal, but when you look at the contract, it really doesn't tell the members what exactly we hope that they'll do over the next three years.
Are you talking about the written contract from the law department? Because the RFP becomes part of the contract.
Right.
So, all the information is in the RFP.
Right, they have an RFP, but then it doesn't say, okay, well, we want you to do these studies, these are the studies you're going to do, and this is a timeline for doing those studies. I think that's the comments that I've received from some of the members?
Okay.
That they'd like to see more detail on, and maybe that's another.
Well, again, that's all spelled out in the RFP, and, you know, keep in mind, you know, this isn't really a knee-jerk reaction to sending this to council, this took months to get this to council, and again, with your help, Attorney Hayes, and the Attorney Lafferty. So, we've had this experience with Rubicon, we've already known of a relationship with them, we know of the services that they provide, we wrote the RFP. So, if there's certain language that needs to be specifically spelled out in the front pages of that, I would have to defer that to the law department.
Sure.
But what my expectation is, is their delivery of services is in the RFP, and keep in mind, you're talking about a half a million dollar savings here. So, it's a potential of a half a million dollar savings and greater efficiencies being provided to the public. And keep in mind, some of the, we should probably talk a little bit more about this, and because it's technology-based and performance-based, and bringing efficiencies to the department is something that I hold, you know, true and near to my heart. It's part of the responsibilities that I have every single day to provide low-cost services with the best quality in mind. So, this system will help us to at least explore that avenue at a minimum cost compared to what other cities or other suppliers may have to offer. The huge benefit here is, we will be able to know at a moment's notice, soon as we sign in to the Rubicon technology, the web system, we will know exactly where every single truck is. The optimization part is part of the responsibility in here for them to build more efficient routes for our drivers, for our equipment, so that we're not over utilizing the equipment every single day, we don't have them in North Scranton, we don't have them in Westside, we don't have them in Manuka, all one truck, all one day. That is absolutely absurd, but that's exactly what's happening. This program, this RFP, this contract allows greater efficiencies, so that we can focus possibly on one or two sections of the city per day, and still provide the cost-effectiveness in fuel, in just, you know, wear and tear on the vehicles, okay? So, a lot of thought process went into this, and this is what we're providing to council for your consideration, and if we want to, you know, put our department into a position on a platform where we're using technology to provide low-cost services on time and with efficiencies and quality, I'm asking for your consideration on this, on this legislation.
Two things stuck out to me here. Number one, as you stated, the, it's going to, based on what is in the proposal, it's going to pay for itself, four times over. I mean, they say that their analysis indicates that we have the opportunity to realize a half a million dollars in cost savings annually. So, that was the first thing that stuck out to me. The second thing I wanted to ask you about is the fact that with this technology, as we know, garbage trucks are going down our city streets every single day, every single day. So, according to the proposal, they can note things like a vacant home, something that could help the code enforcement?
Correct.
Department out, the licensing and inspections department. To me?
Right.
And that's come up here before, once or twice, to me, that would be huge. Now, I don't know how that would work, and if that's something that you are envisioning with this, but can you speak to that part of it?
Yes, there is a crossover, there's a crossover from the registered individuals that, registered properties that will provide trash at the curbside, or trash in a pickup in an alleyway, and if that is not an authorized site, if that's not an authorized property, that will ping on the device, on the onboard device, that it's an unauthorized pickup. So, we will know instantly, our drivers could report that, and an investigation can follow through the lips department, through the treasury, to find out if that property is actually, really has habitats in there that's producing it, that they just didn't pay their fees. So, there's a tremendous information flow back to the administration, so that we can be more efficient with the overall services that the city's providing, whether they're billing or not billing. So, that's a great question, and I appreciate you asking that.
And I was surprised by the amount of money that we can save, according to their analysis, simply on the fact that if someone calls and says, hey, you didn't pick my garbage up?
Correct.
But it wasn't out when they were there.
Correct.
So, we should not have to go back?
Correct.
And pick that up. And the amount of money, and I can't remember exactly what it is, but it was in the tens of thousands, that you could save just on that alone?
Correct. And that scenario plays out, Councilman Goh, almost every single day, and, you know, we tried to give the benefit to the resident, or to the taxpayer, to the caller, we give that benefit to them now in the future, and we've experienced this with the trial period, the drivers, when they're stopped in front of the home, they will be able to record that there's no garbage at the curb, or there's no garbage in the back of their property in an alleyway. They will actually be able to take a real-time picture, and it gets downloaded into the system instantly, supervisors that monitoring that back at headquarters will be able to see it pop up, here's an instance, the driver's reporting it, our dispatcher will be able to see it on their desktop. If they get a phone call from that resident, we're going to tell that resident, sorry, we didn't miss your stop, it was a late putout, or you didn't put it out, we'll see you next week. That's where the efficiencies come.
Right.
So, Tom, Rubicon is going to gather data, which, based on the activities of the DPW garbage trucks and recycling trucks, then they're going to make a report and recommendation as to certain routes and different plans, correct?
Correct.
And, so at the conclusion of this, of this three-year contract, what does the city have? Do we have to continue on with the relationship with Rubicon in order to keep that plan in place, or do we have their plan, and we can implement it independent of them?
Well, we're owners of the equipment, we're owners of the software, we're owners of the hardware, so that's something that we can go it alone, there would be, we probably would have, we most likely would have to put out an RFP for the monitoring services of it, but that would be about it, and that would be much lower cost, just to pay for the monitoring of it, for the service charge, so that we can still have, upload it into the cloud, onto their servers.
So, the data that we have, and our plan, we own that at the end?
Yes, we do, yes.
Okay. So, we, I mean, the contract seems to indicate that they're the owner of it, and we have a license to use it, but that's something we can work out as well. But that's our expectation, is that at the end of the day, that's our information, that's our plan, we own it.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin, that's where I was going to go next.
Any other questions? Well, to wrap this up for tonight, I do want to thank the three of you, Larry, Tom, Scott, first of all, for the work that you all do, and number two, to go through this exercise, as I said to each of you before this meeting and last Tuesday, to my knowledge, this type of thing, at least in city government, has never been done before, for whatever reason, but, you know, all of us are very thankful, because it helps us to understand the budget, to get your rationale behind it, and to make an educated decision. I actually think it's good government, and it's good for the people to see that this is how their city government's working, this is how their tax, where their tax dollars are going, and the fact that, you know, you all are trying to do the best that you can. So, you know, we sat here tonight for three hours, and it was well worth it. I learned an awful lot about the thought process that you put behind each one of these line items, and it may not be the most exciting thing in the world, but to me, it's very, very important, and it's a worthwhile exercise. So, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, thank you, council, and happy Thanksgiving next week.
Thanks for watching ECTV. Please follow us on Facebook and subscribe to our YouTube channel.